Good evening, everybody. So we stand for the court and pray. Praise God. Heavenly Father, as we come before you this evening, I want to thank you for all your many, many blessings. Heavenly Father, we ask that you'll be with us this evening, that you'll give us the knowledge and wisdom that we need. Heavenly Father, we ask you especially to be with our county employees, our first responders, those that work in the courthouse. We ask that you will put your hand of guidance and protection over them and bless them. Heavenly Father, we just give you the praise for all things. Now, Lord, again, give us the knowledge that we can make the right decisions for our county. And we ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
The United States of America, a true republic, which stands one nation under God, the name of his liberty and justice for all.
Okay, seated. All three committees. By the way, this, we just started not long ago. There's a paper over there that you can sign in on if you would. If you want to speak, there's a column there you can mark if you want to speak. Uh, so if you would hear a little bit, we've got a, we've got an executive session with Charlie. So if you haven't signed in, please do. And before we go into that, I want to ask the one, uh, part meeting, everything on the agenda that we.
Our correspondent is the town of Western Port and tree lighting and holiday programs. Under new business, the items under agenda for discussion. Um, this was in the notes from the last meeting and this put it on the agenda. The use fee versus the levy for the ambulance authority, the breast cancer awareness use of the courthouse property. And then the two appointments. About thirty.
Okay.
We were at.
Do I have a motion to accept it? They approved the agenda.
I have a motion to approve the agenda.
I'm sorry, I didn't approve that also. Okay, without any further ado, Charlie Winston, executive session, correct? So we'll let you guys enjoy yourself for a couple of minutes.
Congratulations on doing the presentation. There's some, I'll second it, this government.
Joe, I'll tell you, I say picture. It's that off and down shortly.
If I could do something. That's my caller. There's always. I pause, I can't say.
I'm turning the air.
Sorry.
I'm more of a, oh.
I don't believe the bird, she gives her. We don't think of birds, she gives her. She's, she's.
That stopped her handwriting.
Which I said, why should come out of the second.
I was just saying, another.
See, you don't really need, you don't need a motion going to the board come out of executive session. We can recall. All right. Hello. Um.
Now, where are we?
No objections will come out of executive session and there was no action taken, just a report given. Okay, we're down to the minutes for the previous meeting. Did you guys read?
I read them over. I made a motion to approve the minutes from the last, yeah, from the last meeting.
I accepted that with, but also correspondents.
Public comments.
Public comments will be, oh, yes, sir.
Oh, you didn't have it.
Yeah, I got it. The only one who signed up to speak was Gordon, he don't speak till five, right, sir? He want to say something before. Well, we'll listen to you because we know your lies, man. You're gonna have to kind of pardon me because I'm just about losing my voice because I've been working and I got kind of dehydrated today and. And talk, there's guys here with, well, not, when I talk some, because I had to read, I was my voice. Makes for a happy life. But anyway, then there's no comments now and, uh, court supporters, officer of the sheriff, want to report. Well. We get down there too, Dad. You got anything to touch on, Joel? It's a, they must have reported. That's it. Money's holding up good so far. Okay, then we'll go one down to the division of correctional rehabilitation. Uh, we got a, a debt, debit here of two thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars, forty-four cents. Then, and then we got, uh. We got Bill Murphy here wanting, uh, he. Presenting a letter to be on the Clarkson Record. You know, just to frankly, name something familiar.
I do.
I don't, I don't know.
He's a good guy. He had like two hundred girls on the softball league, had he coordinated.
Oh, I don't know them.
Yeah, so four basketball teams that he puts into the league up here.
Okay, sure, he's, he'd be guilty of that.
Yeah.
You were wanting somebody that ended the county.
Yes, yep. Okay, so we'll rush in here a little bit. Uh, town of Western Port, tree lighting, holiday. Uh, that'll be on. Well, when's the ten on, when's the date on that?
December the fourth, twenty twenty-five at seven P M. Oh, wait, that's the parade.
That's, that's, I would say you sounded like, I, it's not on this paper, the data that, yeah, is it?
Well, that's the parade.
It's parade, seven, thirty on Thursday, December fourth. They don't have the.
It's the following week, the parade, the week is before December the fourth. And so it'll be the week of Thanksgiving, man.
Oh, what's that?
It says the week before the parade, the parade's on the fourth. Do they mean exactly what, or like twenty best Thanksgiving? Well, the parade is December the fourth and the tree lighting is the week prior.
Heard to that, okay. And it's on the Thursday night, so. Okay, just anybody who wants to be in the parade, if you need, uh, application, I got one for you, you can have. All right, move down a little bit, uh.
Everything else on the agenda, uh, and that's, that's under new business, sir.
Yeah, I thought it was, that's what I was looking at.
Correct, also the C D.
Yeah, all right, or in appointments, or visits.
I'll make a motion, uh, we'll put Bill Murphy on the Clarkson Record.
I second that, approve that also. Update on the courthouse, anybody have any input to the courthouse?
Luke had something in his email, we'll bring it up.
Dedication project.
Yep.
Thank you, guys. Uh, I'll just read this for him, this was in his email. Uh, dedication ceremony was nice, I leaned to the best, fantastic job organizing and the team did a great job putting it together. Uh, sheriff does not want people to, to be able to exit the courthouse and exit the door that leaves from the magistrate lobby. We got a throw from an alarm panic bar so that the door would be an emergency exit only. The cost will be seven hundred and forty-three dollars. We also got phrasing for access control on the door. But that would cost several thousand dollars due to the way we would have to configure it. And it would require its own controller, which is a thousand dollars by itself.
Is this one five and?
This is up to you all, but I told the sheriff I would get pricing on these items, so you all could decide what you wanted. So it sounds like the original cost of seven hundred and forty-three would be for people could go out the door, but what they do and the alarm would go off.
Was this decided by court security, though? Because after hours, that's the only way we could come up.
No, this is never, I'll manage to pull back.
Alongside the, the.
Yeah, we're gonna have to trade out.
Other than. Has people been done out that way yesterday?
But other than hiring a new available booth, they're twenty-four children. I can't stop them. Um. We put signs up, done everything, not an exit, whatever, like, very cool.
Do they have the same issue at the door where the stairs are?
Somewhat, but not in that, that I think we can probably do something without having to do at any cost.
You're gonna talk all the way to the other end of the, as you.
Everywhere the lobby per se.
And then the stairs on that end as well.
Yes, sir. Down to my knowledge, nobody's using that side, the stairwell. Much, I know, uh, the assessor's office can use a little bit, I think you guys use it when they need, so. At least that's gonna be in the.
And the goal is to get everybody to come out and leave the other end.
The goal was to have accountability in the building. If something were to happen and us having the happy knowledge of who was in the building and knowing who may still be in the building if something happened.
So we're bound to have account of everybody that's in there, who was in there.
If they're exiting the building, we don't know about it, then you're possibly going to, uh, put somebody else in danger, whatever the case may be, if they're in there looking for somebody that's supposed to be in there.
Whenever you exit the door where there's nobody at, somebody could be standing there, walk right into.
That too.
With a gun, you're not going through the middle of the table.
I understand there's no limit of access once you get through that.
Right, there is none.
You go straight up the stairs and up to the, yeah, our floor.
What do you suggest, any suggestions?
You think panic bar with an alarm would be sufficient?
Sir.
The, the alarm on a panic bar is that, would that be?
For the interior door, yes.
Right.
It takes a fog access to get it to exterior, well, then again, if somebody, or if it doesn't matter whether their alarm or not, yeah, somebody exits the door and come in. Other than putting a letter out to, uh, each office stating that that's not to be used except for emergency purposes.
How hard would it be to put a fog button where you can't go out unless you use your key fob?
Can't do that.
Can't do. You can't do that one?
Fire marshal, every door has to have a panic alarm, panic bar, so that at least they can open it from the inside. Okay, I see.
Well, actually, I think the fog should be saving fire alarm activated, you can exit any door. Verify, I think that's, that's how it's set up. It's a panic alarm with a fire alarm, whatever's activated, you can exit any door. I can confirm that a profit.
Good.
Unless the, unless the electric goes out too, then the doors don't have.
There's battery backup on those. There's battery backup on those doors.
We've had a couple of power out searches and that's. We didn't have a monitor from the version to do, I think, I think that's less.
And just another, just to, to let you know, I don't know if, if the, when the governor was here Friday, I don't know if his, if you talked to his two security officers much, but they loved drones, the protection that he had, they loved. They said that's probably one of the better, better, uh, setups with all the law enforcement at the corners and.
I'd actually, that was even several phone calls about that. Uh, being able to explain to them the advantage of that is, again, with the two that we have, uh, the way, the, the technology they have, it counts every vehicle they have parking on. And any motion on the U M V moving, it picks that up and it counts however many vehicles it is.
Well, even Friday morning, you had a little incident with them.
Yeah, uh.
I mean, it didn't mountain nothing, but at least you, you got the guy.
Yeah, the captain, uh, actually entered sheets and seen a subject that appeared to have a body armor vest on. And before he was able to locate him, he was, the vehicle was leaving. And, I mean, being able to relay that information, we said attract the vehicle out there to R G's, seven eleven, and burn track, the gentleman walked from R G's to the house, which we were able to identify at that point. It wasn't a one hundred percent look like a bulletproof vest, it was a workout vest. Not a bulletproof vest, but.
It's by the house.
And he probably, uh.
But he parked at R G's and then walked to town.
He, he was in the, in a vehicle with other people who.
Oh, okay.
Actually suspended, so we were able to do the use of the dirt and track them from there all the way down. Right, should I?
So we want to just pull it off on the door thing or?
Yeah, let me get some more information on that to see if, if that actually disabled once the fire alarm is activated.
Uh, seven hundred and forty-three dollars for the alarm to panic bar. And he said, we also got pricing for access on, access control of the door, and that would cost several thousand dollars due to the way we have to configure it, and it would require a tone controller, which is a thousand dollars by itself.
What's that, worship? Uh, what was that tour?
Uh, a different way of doing that door, of access control on that door. So. Uh, moving on, what he, he has on his stuff here, access control system and cameras. I met with Advantage to finish the courthouse access control system at P three did not complete. Advantage has now finished this work and air charges are fifty-nine hundred dollars. Uh, we received, he didn't really say he needs a motion, I guess he needs a motion to pay for that.
I think we actually received the court, uh, the cyber, but that's another cyber security.
Okay, well, he's.
Last week too.
He has something here, we've, we've received twelve thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight dollars in grant funds for this project. P three originally quoted sixteen thousand, two hundred and ninety-three, which you approved back in April. They charged us a deposit of eight thousand, one hundred and forty-six dollars and fifty cents for equipment and to begin installation, leaving eight thousand, one hundred and forty-six dollars and fifty cents in the project budget. So I guess we'd pay advantage out of that pro, that fifty-nine hundred dollars out of that project budget, that eight thousand, one hundred and forty-six fifty. Give me the six thousand number again. He said, he's gave a number of six thousand something. Sixteen thousand, sixteen, that was what P three originally quoted, sixteen thousand, two hundred and ninety-three dollars.
It has been approved, that's.
Yeah. Um, Advantage completed the door controllers and access control system, so that it's fair that we pay them the fifty-nine hundred dollars for this work. Based on the discussions with Advantage, P three should refund us about twenty-five hundred dollars. Since they did very little actual work, P three disagrees and claims we may owe them more. They canceled one scheduled meeting with me, and we have not yet had the opportunity to meet again. Uh, they will likely, there, this will likely be a dispute. That said, they did already have some of the equipment on site, which does have a decent amount of value. Uh, based on, uh, the, the remaining security need is cameras for the addition. Advantage quoted nine thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine dollars for this. See attached quote, if P three refunds twenty-five hundred and with the two thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollars and fifty cents left, still left in the budget, we could cover four thousand, seven hundred and forty-six dollars and fifty cents of the cost. That would leave four thousand, nine hundred and forty-two dollars and fifty unfunded. We could either pay that difference or reduce the number of cameras. Uh, he goes on to say, I recommend we improve payment of fifty-nine hundred dollars to Advantage now for the door access control work as it was mission critical to open the facility. The cameras are important, but not as urgent, if you want to decide on those now, that's fine. Otherwise, I can meet with Sergeant Hotchkiss to review and see if the number of cameras can be reduced. So with that being said, I'll make a motion to we pay Advantage the fifty-nine hundred dollars and that he further get with Hotchkiss can review the cameras.
Yeah, I'll second.
So I've been working on that P three issue.
Yeah, sir.
We were told for months that at the court security desk and magistrate board, continually flipping screens, that we couldn't monitor the cameras continually. Or not only on the podcast phone, but I was also told that it was a hard drive issue and they had to order a hard to hard drive, which would be extensively expensive. And when Advantage came in, it took them out of three minutes to fix the issue at that cost.
I agree, there were several things that we were told. And I really kind of shook my head and didn't understand why things were the way they were, but I'm glad to see Advantage in here now and built some of this stuff.
Yes, sir.
Actually, cameras. Is our cyber, or the, well, court security grant, is that a January to December, or is that a July to June?
What's that, that they're grant that they just built out, what they worked for, the one we got?
Court security, well, we're processing one right now, but it's like, I know we need some cameras, but is that something we can wait for the next cycle, get more?
I have no idea what cameras have been requested where.
I, I don't know.
I can't remember if it's a January to December or July to June grant. There's a couple of.
Seems to me like it'd be a July to June thing, because you apply now and we're going over through the winter about if we hear, if we got it or not, or all that stuff.
And in courthouse facilities is January, December, so.
It was, but then when they discussed the additional cameras and no, didn't know where to nurse. I'll get, I'll get with them to see whether they're claiming or potentially going to put this.
Yeah, Hotchman's.
Yeah. And he said, he, he says it in there, we'll get with Hotchkiss as well to review, see about the number of cameras, so.
I'll check with him and see, I haven't been told anything.
All right.
The general, you're not sure. I'm, I'm with him. Well, can we, can we take, moving on, because yeah, you know, it's after five minutes after his appointment, no, I want you.
You'll get me to the later, sir.
Oh. I meant the courthouse, courthouse, uh.
Yes, courthouse.
Uh, annexed the stuff, like I was going to, that's for, sir.
Okay, thank you, uh, I'm staying up because I'm used to doing that. Um, we have a request for living faith ministries, we would ask you, uh, that we want, we've partnered with Flags of Fellowship, uh, which is from the International Fellowship of Christians and Jews to celebrate October the seventh. Um, they've given us one thousand, two hundred Israeli flags. Uh, we're distributing them to churches, we've got about seven or eight churches now participating with us in Kaiser. And we've distributed flags, a number of flags out to them, but we're asking specifically if we can be granted an area of the courthouse to display some of the remaining flags, up to seven hundred, but probably not over that. Uh, and we're asking for October to display them, October third through October the seventh.
Are these the little?
No, they're seventeen inches by twelve inches. I should have brought one to nine, but it's, it's a large.
What you get from American Legion when we put them on these graves and stuff, but.
Yeah, something like that, and this is a copy of what we would publish with, in the displays, that people would know that who's sponsoring this and, uh, you know, what, what it represents. So that's our request for, uh.
You want this back?
No, you can, you can keep that.
I'd like to, because I want to write that down.
Which October third through the seventh, we'll probably put it up early on the third and take it down after our service, who maybe just. It was on the seventh.
You're basically wanting permission to provide to the courthouse.
I'm making a motion, we allow that to take place, flags in the courthouse.
I'll second that.
I agree, okay.
Thank you, is that all, that's all I need.
You got it. You're welcome, just hey, if you'd like.
Thank you, I may just for enjoyment.
I know you go to a lot of any.
Okay, do you have anything else on the courthouse annex? Okay, C B D out at, uh, at the health department, I don't know if any of you should have been by there, but the metal framework's up. So, I talked, when I talked, last time I talked to A J, he said, the way it looks, it'll probably be under roof, uh, maybe the end of next week if weather cooperates with him, so that's a good thing.
Luke, Luke has one here that he needs a signature from Roger if he hasn't already signed for A J.
Yeah, I'll switch to approve this B G, pay out number eight. And the amount of this draw is two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and forty-three fifty. The one right in front of you.
Is this it?
No, it's the one right in front of him.
Right here.
Yeah.
But I was looking for.
Oh, I, yeah.
Looking for these other things on the side.
Yeah, I have it here for you.
Oh, you know, you got it there.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, did we say two hundred and twenty-seven thousand?
Yes, the middle of the page there. It says amount requested this draw.
This is, if this is.
This draw.
This can hear, definitely. The amount we for this draw, yeah, two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and forty-three dollars, fifty cents.
So I'll make a motion where we prove that.
I say.
The president's, the sign.
And also raises president's sign.
I second it. You got it there with you now?
I got a couple of different signs.
Okay, that's a good, okay, good deal. Okay, moving on down, I'm getting chase for.
Uh, we need backup on, hopefully with fundings.
Oh, I marked it off because I'm, okay, yeah, go on, Bill.
I don't have anything on the view funding, but, uh, Luke does. Uh, he has on here, have received additional information for the other suits that are settling out. Uh, he sent several hundred pages worth of information to us commissioners by email, and he did. Uh, he needs commission to approve the verification and give the president permission to sign. I know, I'll admit, I didn't read through the several hundred pages, just kind of skimmed through them real quick. Uh, I would like to make a motion that, to give the president authorization to sign.
To approve.
To approve it and to, for the president to sign it. Um, it is just to get us in on those lawsuits, basically what it is.
I second that. That one you got on the floor?
Yes. What's that?
Uh, change the question. You're trying, she the same company, helping us, or?
I don't know, but I don't know all this, that's fresh. She's the one that said, yeah. Chase car, update, yeah, we don't have a, we don't have a report yet, the, oh, wait.
Uh, it's just the report for September first through the twenty-third. Right now, we are up to fifty-five total alerts for the car. Uh, we have ten transports, which I know seems like a relatively low number compared to last month, but we were canceled by another paramedic nineteen times, uh, and a B L S provider twelve times. And then on fifteen occasions, there was no patient found, or it was a good intent call. So when you actually break down the statistics, there's quite a bit more information there. We finalized our college partnerships with Garrett Community College and have set aside three days for students to come and ride with us from that specific institution. Uh, we have continued the contract with Blue Ridge C T C, who has a paramedic cohort starting and an advanced E N T class starting.
Pier Ponte.
And Pier Ponte Community Technical College, uh, today out of Fairmont has reached out and wanted to send students here, so pretty far.
That's a good way.
We have, well, we have two students, two mineral county students that are traveling that distance that have requested to come back here. Um, we've had one patient that was a critical patient alone, we've transported to two different facilities. Um, it has made up a crew and, uh, gotten out on two calls for agencies that would have failed otherwise. Um, and it made it to the scene a total of twenty-three times so far, uh, first before any other unit. Um, Dr. Curvos has spent a total of twenty hours thus far, not counting today, on responsible doing ride-alongs. Uh, as far as vehicle maintenance, no issues. Um, response to the old A L S two zero one was taken route twenty-eight auto sales for just a tune-up, just to check everything over. And it just got back from custom concepts today, it had to have the re-lettering, uh, done on it, and it was finished today, so I should have it back at the center soon.
Did you patch?
What is it?
Have you, did you patch it?
I know, this was, that was just simply the graphic that that was done. Um. We had the, uh, electrical work for the outside building donated, um, by Darren Puffenberger. He came and did the outlet installs for us, so just minimal cost in the actual, uh, hardware for the building. But it now has a working shoreline, still doesn't kind of fix our issue of the weight of responsible. Still doesn't kind of fix our issue of the weight of response one in the building, it doesn't fit, but response two fits in there fine, and that's where it will be shore lined.
We did, um, have a meeting though with Mark Buco. Um, and discussed the possibility of, uh, a conjunction with PVH for a temporary building structure. Um, which he just had there, I don't, I don't know Derek Green's title, to be honest with you, but basically he's PVH's engineering. Guy, and he just emailed me today to reach out and discuss a meeting regarding that. So a place to store a vehicle.
Where's it being stored now?
At the nine one one center, but outside in the elements. Yeah, I know. So we're working on that though. It just, we tried to fit it in the garage and it, um, hits the light bar and all the antenna, and it was gonna end up breaking. The equipment, so we decided that that was not the best option at this point in time, but the other vehicle fits in there very nicely. So, we're still utilizing the space, but just for the response two vehicle. But to be determined on that meeting with, uh. Derek Green.
Uh, education wise, we did a. Layperson Narcan administration class, as well as stop the bleed at first aid and CPR for the park rangers. Um, at Elk Guard Station, as well as their fire EMS members, uh, that was free of charge. We have spoken last week, we did a presentation to the Kaiser Lions Club on the chase car. And I have done. Four, uh, small group educational sessions on our Lucas device with our dispatchers at the request of their supervisor for Sponad for them. And we have a layperson Narcan administration class for the public scheduled, um, October seventh at Company Fifty Seven Bates at six thirty PM. And two weeks ago, Dr. Curvos hosted a regional pediatric day with two guest lecturers from WBU Children's Hospital. That was open to all departments and all surrounding counties for education for EMS. We also were granted one of the two remaining, uh, spots for the ultrasound. Study for the state of West Virginia, so we finalized paperwork for that today through the State Office of EMS.
And we finalized and emailed over the paperwork for the pre-hospital blood to PVH. Um, to set up a meeting with the blood bank for that, so that will, as soon as that is done, they, um. Also, we discussed with Mark Buco, uh, about the equipment for that, and who said that he would like for PVH to purchase that for our county. So, that's, that's a huge cost, um, that would be covered, um. He has been, I mean, I thought our meeting, J- Jason was present at our meeting, I thought it really went well. He really wants Potomac Valley Hospital to work with EMS and pre-hospital medicine in the county and create a true team. From patient, you know, called to EMS provider to nurse to hospital, et cetera. So it was really, a really good meeting.
What do you know with the blood bank, you say?
So to get blood on the vehicle, we'd have to pick up the blood from a blood bank itself, and Potomac Valley Hospital's blood bank. Wants to be the one to allow us to do that from there, as opposed to driving to. Uh, Ruby or Johnstown or UPMC or any of the other. More distant hospitals. Yes.
And we'll keep it in the vehicle, we have to.
And then just some food for thought, um, I know we, I mentioned briefly earlier about the cancellations by other medics. Um, of the five that ran thus far this month, three of them were born out of this program. It's where they did their education from, so.
How many things you carry?
Two units. That's all, the, there's very specific state requirements, and you're only allowed to have the exact equipment that the state selects. Which is probably a good thing, because then there's no, you know, deciding among thing, there's no waste, it's you, you get exactly what they say and, and that's it.
Which is what everybody carries, that's the same standard, flight ground.
And that way it's very structured and rigid, and there's no deviation.
So one other topic on this, uh, I don't know if this is to be made today, but something to be thinking about, the committee. That look to see the county can feasibly run that chase car is really no longer needed. And so I didn't know if we need to officially disband the committee and then let the chase car vehicle. Come directly to us to, to walk through any issues or anything like that.
I don't know if we're already being heard, just not in that, or.
Just something to be thinking about.
Something, yeah. They're not hurt to leave if they want to see how things go. I think so. Won't hurt this thing regarding.
Yeah.
They're willing to stay.
Yeah. There's really no, there isn't any use for us at this point for the committee, but because it's, we did our job. And seeing a bit was feasible for us to, to run it as a calendar. Just think about.
So she asked. Yesterday if we could do an executive session with. With our Dr. Curvos, so I'll make a motion at this time, and that's, do we do, we need to do another one first?
Yes.
Okay, no objection, we'll go into executive session, Dean. No objection for all of, uh, executive session, no, uh, action was taken. So.
Yeah, yeah, we do.
No, no action was taken in here.
Oh, no, no. But I, I'll move forward with making a motion that, um, Dr. Curvos will be authorized to verify. Lauren. Turner's time sheets. Lauren will authorize or verify the time sheets of the other employees with the chase line.
And I second that, Dean, I approve that all.
Okay. If there's nothing else, then we will go with the extension all.
Yeah, so the first thing, the first proclamation that we're gonna talk about was the breast cancer awareness, um. The breast cancer awareness, uh, day ceremony will be next Wednesday, October the first. The courtroom is available, and I think Shirley does want to have it inside, and she asks if you all are available to attend. It'll be at noon. Next Wednesday, October the first. And then, uh, along with that. Asking use permission, she did not do an authorization form to use the courthouse next Wednesday, but if you would authorize use of her. Program next Wednesday.
I'll move the letter E for house.
Oh, I agree with that.
Okay.
Okay, and then the proclamation is.
And I apologize.
Sir, I'm gonna step off the limit, okay, right there.
Hey, I apologize to you guys for us being fifteen minutes late, we visited.
Do you want me to go ahead? All right, um, the West Virginia Breast Cancer Awareness Day and Breast Cancer Awareness Month twenty twenty five. West Virginia have done a tremendous job in raising awareness for mammograms, which can save lives. Breast cancer is the most commonly diagnosed cancer in women across the United States. Each year in West Virginia, approximately one thousand five hundred and thirty six women are diagnosed and two hundred and ninety women die of breast cancer. A woman has about a one in eight chance of developing breast cancer in her lifetime, and about a one in thirty nine chance of dying from this disease. Currently, the best method to reduce deaths due to breast cancer is through early detection. Mammograms are the best way to find breast cancer early, when it is easier to treat and before it is big enough to feel or cause symptoms. Therefore, lowering the risk of dying from breast cancer, women should talk to their healthcare provider about their individual screening schedule. In recognition of the importance of early detection, we, the Mineral County Commission, do hereby proclaim October first, twenty twenty five. As Breast Cancer Awareness Day and October twenty twenty five as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. We urge all mineral county citizens to work together to promote awareness and understanding the need to succeed screening for cancers.
I can motion the whole tech with proclamation.
So, second, I approve that also, which it truly strange, but I know a young lady today, right? She may be out of surgeries in Morgantown Avenue's now. So today, so. She can say.
It is.
Very sad.
Jason, was your motion also to authorize surprising to sign?
Yes. I'm making motion that Roger able to sign this proclamation. I'll second.
And she's here also for four H.
We're here this evening requesting a formal proclamation, proclamation for National Four H Week. And National Four H Week is October the fifth through the eleventh. And we were, um. Wondering if you guys would accept this, if we could fly a flag at the courthouse, um, during that week, during our National Four H Week. And I have a proclamation, do you want to read it? Proclamation for National Four H Week, whereas this year's National Four H Week theme. Beyond ready reminds us that four H is building a ready generation in a world of change. And equips young people with skills for the future while meeting them where they are today. Whereas four H and America's largest youth development organization, supporting six million youth across the country. And whereas four H programs are delivered by the cooperative extension system, a community of more than a hundred. Public land-grant colleges and universities across the nation, that provides experiences for young people to learn by doing. Whereas four H is in every city and county in the United States and helps six million youth become engaged, successful and independent. And whereas four H connects young people and adults to their communities, preparing them for work and life. Through experiential, experiential and inquiry-based learning while providing emerging research for positive youth development. And whereas expanding from its strong agricultural roots. Four H helps young people explore the world around them and grow into productive adults. And whereas supporting future leaders in science, agriculture and community leadership is an important imperative. For US Department of Agricultural. National Institute of Food Agriculture Four H Program. And now therefore, we, the Mineral County Commission, do hereby proclaim October fifth through the eleventh, twenty twenty five. As National Four H Week throughout Mineral County, and encourage all of our citizens to recognize four H for the significant. Impact it has made on and continues to make by empowering youth with the skills they need to lead in for a lifetime. And witness whereof, we have here unto set our hands on this twenty third day of September, twenty twenty five.
Make a motion that we sign this proclamation for National Four H Week. I second, I agree with it.
You want a picture?
Yeah, you don't mind, please?
We're getting four interested here with all them big smiles of those.
Yeah, this is all our team leaders.
All right, how you doing, sir? I didn't see you sitting back there behind that. Huh?
I was hiding.
Question?
Yeah.
I just got your voice out. We have the.
Let me get it on here.
With the American flag and the state flag. Uh, if we want to put another picture on, or just take the state flag down, put that up a little.
Yeah, and we never.
So she's, okay, is everybody ready? Are they ready?
Now before. We never. We're gonna make a motion here and then for you. I haven't forgot yet.
Something about.
Uh, yeah. For the egg position. Um, Shawnee Isner, she had accepted a position with the Mineral County Technical Center, and the position has been approved. Approved by the West Virginia University to hire another person, and WBU Extension will be taking applications soon, so, um. If you have any further questions, uh, talk to Margaret about that, you could email her or call her. But they are gonna, um, have the applications out soon.
This time I'll make a motion that we allow them to hang their four H flag on our flagpole at the courthouse. Uh, for the week of October fifth. The eleventh, the eleventh, yeah.
And I second that.
Thank you.
Anything else you need?
I think that's all we do right now.
I know in your four H class, okay, when you have, oh, uh. Um, Mango, you go, they go, they're something up to.
Yeah.
Do me one favor. Have a classroom smile, that girl. They need to smile, Nike smiles a lot.
We'll work on that, we'll do a smile at class.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Skip up the good work. You're good at X, four H is a good attempt. Very good.
They all do a great job. They're some good kids. Yeah. So do I just?
Yeah, let me get back to it. You guys have a good evening.
Okay. Well, it won't, it doesn't take nothing, he is right, hope for him, he can put it right along that, so.
Okay, we're moving right along that case fire department financial review. I've talked to, just to let you guys know, I've talked to a lot of people, I know what the attorney general opinion is on signing this. I don't think we ought to make the law something. Get an extra. Audit if they've had one, that work is sufficient now.
Yeah, so according to attorney general. They're saying that we don't, even though our lawyer said that we do have the right to do that, the attorney general's saying that we don't. And then also in the meantime, the legislative, all that's changed over to the legislative auditor. Not the state auditor, the legislative order will be doing fire departments. And they're basically asking for the same thing that we was going with, so. And they're gonna do that every year, so I think that we can just drop it, and. At this time, I would like to make the motion that we. Throw the request for. Financial review of all fire departments and EMS.
I'll second it. And freeze. They got one, that's enough.
Yeah.
I think so. And there's a lot of companies can afford this.
Yeah. Well, and, and so now they're gonna have to send all the paperwork to legislative order too, so they don't have to carry it up.
I, I agree, okay. Update on the sale of the house trailers.
Oh, we got this?
Uh, this one is the bid from Ron Close, uh, the two thousand six dollar for six four thousand and one dollar.
How much?
Six four thousand and one dollar.
This bid, we've been reading, you know, this bid is from Kenny Nutter, he said I am placing a bid for ten thousand five hundred fifty dollars for the FEMA trailer. Being sold for, by the Mineral County Commission. So that's a new.
Does that say Ron Close? Does that say Ron Close Senior or Junior or?
Attorney General. He's the one that I wired about, uh.
Yeah, I do too.
I can find that and let him know he need a bid for it. He should make a motion to cut back to him.
Yes, sir. I'm saying Margaret's phone.
It's my marriage, but for purpose of family relations, I will do. And it's his dad. Being my son-in-law's dad, but I will just go ahead and refrain from saying anything.
Um, I'll get that. You want to make somebody explain the bid. Ron Close, Ron Close, Ron Close.
I make it be Ron Close Senior. I make a motion that we accept Ron Close Senior's bid for the two thousand six trailer for sixteen thousand one dollar. And I say. Me too.
Yes. That's our little file. Um, check, may I ask Mineral County Commission? Yes.
You want right here, we all.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Review the all new for internet. Go to Charles. Who play us on that? I need to get my computer going. He went to sleep. I did not see that. Can't say that. I don't blame it.
Uh, since this will likely have an extended timeline for project implementa- implementation, I'm not going to take any further action on this and will pass it on to the next administrator to research. Once they get their feet wet, I do not want to start a project that someone else will likely have to finish. So I guess we will, uh, postpone that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, new items of business is approval to the issue county P cars employees and the chase car.
Chase, my question is, do, does every employee need a P card?
No.
Is this Lauren?
I would say probably Lauren and I would say Craig as Assistant Chief as well.
Can it be?
Because if Lauren's on vacation or something, then Craig would fill in as.
They have been shaping the car.
No.
No.
Cause they're, they're to your name. Even personally responsible for.
We would use it for fuel. It automatically extracts a tax discount and you don't have to do that using a fuel. And that's all they use it for. You can actually lock down the bar. If that's the only thing you want them to use it for, we can lock it down to just for fuel.
Well, so it would be also for like our, um, our supply purchases, for medical supply purchases. So it would just be.
Doesn't it Craig and Ann would do that?
Correct.
So the other.
Oh, for the other. Oh, yeah, maybe the others for fuel. Well, then that, yes, that would be good.
So it'd be total three, is that what I'm hearing?
Uh, no, it'd be a total of six.
Six, all one breach.
Two that were active for Craig and Lauren, and then four that would be for the per diem fuel purchases only.
So I'll make a motion that we'll allow P cards for Lauren and Craig for purchases and fuel. And then the other four P cards for the other part time with only fuel access.
I second that and approve it also.
And we did check with, um, the training, cause you have to go through the training to get the card, the state requires that. They did not have any schedule, uh, passed, I think it was last Friday. So we acquired, they did have to schedule past that. So as soon as we find out when the next, um, we get class in and then we break it up whatever bits you're all scheduled.
Thank you.
Is that the, that things come in?
No, this is the purchasing division of the monitor.
Didn't you take it?
I did. I just couldn't run it waste.
All right, okay.
Sit down here for now. We come down here and it's. We go over their training and then our training.
Would it be okay if some of our employees were staggered or would they have to all be on the same day?
No, we'll stagger. Cause I know that's not gonna work for you to have them all probably the same day. Yeah.
Yes, I'll just work the other jobs as well. Okay.
Class of days and then we'll just work around y'all's.
Thank you.
But we're just very strict. Receipts must come back to us.
Yeah, we do that now. They get the receipts.
Signing receipt.
There was, there was somebody who got gas and the machine didn't spit out a receipt. And they went inside and they were, oh, they, the poor person behind the counter, they were like, I need one. And they were like, they took a picture of the pump. It was a whole big. Like, oh, yeah.
Yes, and that has happened. That's happened.
Okay, is that it?
Okay.
All right, review. Discuss approval of annual equal opportunity employment plan.
Uh, Luke says he, I do not have any updates to the plan. It should be sufficient as is, but by law, we need to review it regularly. If you are in agreement with the plan in its current form, please make a motion to accept it, sign it, and put it back in the folder. So I will make a motion to accept the, um, equal opportunity employment plan and authorize the president to sign it.
I'll second it.
I'm not a hundred percent familiar with it, so. I didn't get to look at it.
Thank you, partners, for our brands that we have a current plan. Uh, it just says we are equal opportunity employment. Have we been discriminated?
Probably, I just didn't see it in there. There was some.
I think it is in that email that he sent.
Yeah, I didn't scroll down far enough to see it, so. Okay.
So can Jason make that second since you're signing it?
Sure, I'll second.
The motion was to authorize me to sign it, so.
Yeah.
Jason said.
I, yes, I'll second it. Uh, I don't understand why you need to change it. All right. Uh, you got anything to say on Corporal Goo promotion, sir?
Yes, sir. I, I need you to understand. You guys need to understand that this was not me picking out an individual and just promoting one guy at my own leisure. Apparently, uh, over the weekend, whether it be coincidental or intentional, there was more book face propaganda stuff. So Deputy Goo's promotion from Deputy First Class to portal is due to his longevity. Every deputy gets promoted to portal after six years.
Do you know how much better off or a world be if they do away with bookface?
Oh, it gets better, Mr. President. I have more to explain on that.
My wife was telling me about that. I leave.
Well, apparently, apparently this particular weekend raised some eyebrows when I received the calls, uh, several. I, uh, politely invited several people to come to my office to discuss anything they want to discuss. And I have six meetings scheduled next week.
No.
So.
Interesting.
And I'm to the point now where this, I'm tired of getting these emails and stuff over the weekend and texts about this as being said, that's being said. I won't, and I'll tell you what's being done. What isn't being done? What hasn't been done? What's going to be done? It's gonna be the.
They're upset over Gooch?
Oh, no, there's more to it, sir. There's more to it. Which is. I'm going to give you guys a letter. I had requested some things.
You will take it. So do you need to make a motion on this?
On the.
The general.
Yes.
Oh.
It is after they, there are four years they're Deputy First Class and then two additional years in that position, then they're for pro. Um, but it does need your authorization since it does assume a salary increase.
I make a motion since, uh, Officer Gooch has made it for pro that he gets his pay increased to a thousand dollars from his permission.
I will second it and I approve that also.
Yeah, sure.
We'll call.
Yep.
Okay. What's that?
I said, well, it's similar to a letter I gave you there last week, fully informed.
All right, discussion proved the live scan maintenance.
Was.
Don't do it. Yeah. Yeah, we.
I just need you to know that I didn't just pick and choose somebody. I was more money in it. This is.
Seniority and that's the word.
Yeah, that's.
Well, then.
Apparently it was put out there that I picked.
You know, I don't know what all was in your letter that, that was wrote. Where was it wrote to? You?
Oh, I have no idea. No, it was something, I guess, that came out on Facebook.
Well, you know, my wife said somebody.
If I didn't find it, sir, I would send it to you.
Oh, no. Oh, my wife.
There too.
She, the, she's seen it, was telling me about it. Somebody, this is what gives me, this is the ignorance that we have out here in the world. And I don't care who likes it or not. But they was complaining about the drone that you had up to give security to our, to our governor who, uh, in the some nutcase. And I, and I'm, I don't care if he comes in here and says something, he's a nutcase, made a comment about our governor. I'll tell you right now, our governor likes Mineral County. And I believe in protecting our people.
Well, we try our best.
That, that kind of, she was reading some of it to me and. People is nuts.
People just gonna be kind.
Huh?
Just be kind.
Exactly. It's, it's awful.
Again, I don't know what all, where we, apparently there's parties and I didn't get the memo. So if you guys are having a party all then, you need to send it to them.
She, oh, yeah, I, I, I gotta find out where that's at too.
Party, I didn't.
Okay, it was a.
She lived.
Drunken orgy.
Some, uh, drunken orgy.
Drunken orgy.
Well, that left me, uh.
I didn't even know what I called these.
I'm, I'm an idiot.
Seriously? That's what was, I'm sorry. That news about spending money like a drunken orgy or something like that, I, oh, I don't know.
Oh, oh, we're spending money.
Yeah, we're spending money like a drunken orgy.
Well, again.
Month or so ago, spending money like a drunken sailor.
It raises questions. I fielded several phone calls today. I wasn't any on the chest face and that, but I've got some people coming in next week and I will be more than happy to show whatever they need to see. So.
I know a, a lot of this stuff. I don't know what it's, I own, is it I own Kaiser or I own P Mott?
That's the Mineral County News.
Mineral County News.
Something else, but.
A lot of these letters, my wife will tell me about. But a lot of the people who talks to us, they have good ideas where it's coming from. They laugh about it. They said, what is wrong with the people in Mineral County?
Yeah, my wife tells me.
It's making them look bad.
She tells me if I keep trying to figure it out, I'm gonna.
No, don't figure it out. Just laugh about it. Laugh about it. It's, they're crazy. All right. What about the maintenance? Live scan maintenance plan? Crazy.
Yeah, it's still the same. Uh, I sent the letter requesting an invoice for that price that we were quoted. And I guess you just need the approval of the commission.
Do you have an invoice or?
Yeah, I don't have an invoice yet. So you want that for. But price was.
Four thousand two hundred sixteen.
Yeah, four thousand two hundred sixteen dollars. And again, I don't know why this was not, I can't, I can't answer why. I've never done this one. I don't know.
Okay. What's your thoughts? I'll make a motion for it.
And just. So sorry.
Is that a yearly or is there, is there a yearly?
That's yearly.
It is yearly.
That's, that's a yearly. Four thousand two hundred sixteen dollars.
You don't know what the live scan is?
If there's a yearly contract and.
The videos and picks up the placement placements.
Never. The live scan is, is connected directly to the FBI.
Oh.
For all arrests are prosecuted or, uh, processed and done through the live scan. Um, and if, if you're not familiar with that system, if something in that does go down, it's very expensive.
I second that. And approve it also.
Uh, actually, as the captain looking into it, he cannot find any documentation anywhere where.
There's ever been a contract.
Well, the initial contract, when it was delivered to the company, what they offered, but responses were never made back to the company about extending the contract.
How long ago was that that, that started?
Seemed that it was kind of off for a while until the new building was done. It, once it got set up over there, I think it got set up like, maybe a year ago, September, October.
We can't find anything on that.
They had to paint the tour and everything before they put everything in.
Yeah, we couldn't find anything on the. So. You can only go based off what we have here. What I'm getting from this, it's apparently October twenty twenty-four was when the service plan went into effect. So I don't know if that's more than live scan or is it online and operational?
I think that's about the same time, yeah.
Correct, because we can't find anything on it.
All right.
We're good. All right, how about discuss approvals, service contracts for cradles and vehicles, computers?
We have to be, only have this year. Options, uh, purchasing the new, uh, cradles and installing them. We just will be slightly more expensive than extending the eight thousand eight hundred and seven dollar contract. But this new company, we're getting, actually they gave us a little bit better of a discount, uh, rather than nine thousand one hundred forty-five dollars seventy-five cents. It's gonna be eight thousand nine hundred seventy-seven dollars fifty cents. Plus the shipping was supposed to nine thousand seventy-eight dollars ninety-four cents. But the contract after that for service is only a hundred and.
Hundred here, I'm sorry.
I need to, one thousand two hundred fifty here. Okay.
What is it?
One thousand two hundred fifty a year.
Yeah, rather than the eight thousand. That's per unit.
But what was this, what shouldn't we say nine thousand? What shouldn't we say nine thousand seven hundred?
The new totals will be that thousand seventy-eight dollars ninety-four cents. That blue chip.
That's per the.
No.
That's for the entire fleet.
Okay.
That was for twenty, that was for twenty-five new routers, right? Twenty-five new routers. Yes.
All right, so. You're looking at the nine thousand, what you just said, that would be.
I thought.
So all new stuff. And contract would be twelve for a year. Uh, ninety-four. What was the other, the other thing was eight thousand some to keep what we have?
Keep what we have, which is already at the.
And it's eight thousand a year?
That's right.
You're getting awful expensive here.
I. Again, this was done prior to me. While there was no service contract up there, that I can't explain that. But to keep what we have currently, for cradles, which is they go down, you have to buy something else to replace it with, cause there is no.
Like misses, and this is the modems and the, the car modems and stuff.
Cradle points will give us internet access and everything in our business.
Right.
Tell them to the GPS.
What did you guys say?
We either keep the existing.
Yeah, ours, I mean.
We either keep the existing cradles and enter into the contract with them for eighty-eight hundred dollars or replace everything for two hundred dollars more, three hundred dollars more.
Is that first net or is that a different vendor?
This is completely different. This is.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said to her question. What'd you say? This is first net?
Or this is first land. This is the company that will offer the, the maintenance agreement and the, uh, the route.
Okay.
The service is through first line or first net.
First net.
With AT&amp;T.
Okay. I see.
But your snow maintenance with, with the, uh, eighty-eight hundred dollars is the maintenance.
That is the maintenance.
That is the maintenance for that.
That is the maintenance.
Or we could go nothing and not have any maintenance or anything and let it breaks or call it back to.
Yeah.
But you're gonna either pay eight thousand.
But you still.
Have a contract. Or you're gonna pay.
Nine to.
Six hundred dollars more, get twenty-five new routers. And then next year it's only going to be eight thousand opposed to eight hundred, or eight thousand. That's more about what he just said.
Yeah. Any much choice, I don't think.
But it's not okay.
Uh, that's how there's much of a choice. So I'll make a motion to go with the new route with nine thousand seventy-eight dollars and ninety-four cents. And it's, I'm assuming that price would include the first year of contract, then next year would be twelve fifty after.
Yes.
So that's, yeah, also I'll make a motion.
Second that, good.
About that is all to entry, but just notified that we had a vehicle, uh, transmission without every four grand.
Hello, under point. One of this, will this change the monthly bill with first net or you said it's still monthly first net? Sure. Okay.
But I believe we still have.
Yeah. Thank you guys.
But you know, whatever, I ask you, you pay for it.
Well, you got you got enough vehicles. I'm speaking of vehicles, how many do you have this long? On the road, which needs equipment put on.
Right.
You have three that needs to be along with that tank.
Is that stuff we're going to just purchase or the three?
Oh, no, those, well, those, yes, those have to be better. It'll be a different upset. They're not going to take near the time that I thought it was.
Are you gonna have them parked or just?
Two, two of the trucks will be marked for a moment.
So. You got three of the older vehicles to snuggle on the road, yeah?
Not really older, yes, they're a year old.
Well, that's what I mean.
Yeah, three, three more, a hive and three trucks.
So you got six, seven.
Six total.
We need to get on it and get them on the road.
So can we take one of those to replace the one the transmission just went out of?
It'll get brought down. Although the one that went down was one we planned on keeping. That's how all that was. We have. And there are two charges that'll probably be at least one for sure and the other one may just. Got over three thousand dollars in fixing it.
What about that con contact that you had? With the um where we got the trucks from? That they fix it for us? Use your charms.
Got ninety seven back. I could be as charming as ever and it's never gonna fly. But we did get the one. Uh that we're. We were technically being charged for due to. The time limit of the warranty was slightly over. Our miles was nowhere near. Uh, but once the the GM rep was able to get it to where we. Did not pass the paper, any of the parts repaired that time, we just had to pay for the later. Seven or eight dollars.
Alright. Alright. What about your satellite sheriff's office location?
Uh, we have a place. Northern end, yeah. It's uh what did we add? It was twenty five to thirty?
Twenty to thirty.
Twenty to thirty. Office space. Is going to be. Set up to our specifications. The only thing I was informed that would be any additional cost would be the protective glass that would be used and I think the quote for that is fifteen hundred. But the cost of that would be four hundred dollars a month. The only additional cost that will come to that. Be the electric and the internet. Water and sewer and trash is already is included in that four hundred dollar.
Although you said electric was gonna be included. I may be wrong.
I thought. I thought the only thing we had was electric and the internet, but uh. Again, I might be wrong too, Dutch, I don't know.
What what about computer systems or you want to down there?
I already had systems. So. Basically getting the approval to put it there and. Within a month, it will be up and running.
I I've just been going through my looking back. So the first time we brought this up was like in May or April. But just, I just had some questions and brought to think about.
True.
Cause it is a satellite and we are the stewards of the finances here in the county. And for the people in um. So I know I want to help the people at the other end of the county. I really want to see them make it easier for them. So I just um. One, after Dutch just gave the numbers. At the the building dedication of this new sheriff's department. Building and everything, it's like, is that space, I'm saying utilized before we start taking another office space?
Um, well, the reason for this is not just just to have additional office space. It's going to be used for multiple purpose.
Right.
It's going to be uh. A satellite office for the deputies. Where it's going to be very convenient to them is anytime. That arrest or whatnot are made to them. Even after the hours uh mandatory closing. You're not coming all the way back to Kaiser. You're going straight to the satellite office, which is located on twenty acres in plain. And you go straight from there to Augusta. So you're eliminating that. It's not only going to be a satellite office with the deputies work out of hopefully and at some point when we raise as a vampire believe. We can separate the county into two districts. Uh, two north, two south. It is going to be a tax office as well, starting out probably two days a week as well as uh. Registrations from uh letter of evidence. I spoke to. Uh Jill about this. She really can't put somebody up there because they all have specific jobs do within their office. So she can't pull anybody from there to go somewhere, but it can still uh. It can still be worked. Between two offices to be in and in both.
Even because most people don't know the land, even if the people just had uh birthday property house. It might save them from run crap here. Usually unless you have farm. Doesn't everybody? Does most people can do it if you don't have farm.
In some way.
Assessor's office be assessed.
Can you get there within work hours?
Yeah, how?
Yeah.
How? Well, we have um. Smart dial where they can. Do it over the internet um. They if they can't make it to the office. Most people comes in the office. Bring in their assessment forms that they gotta get farm papers or if they're um getting dog tags, stuff like that. Uh, but we get more people coming in to have bills made. Because they're behind in their taxes then.
And that's something that's automatically transparent. Once it's in their system, it can be pulled up in our in our system at the tax office. It's automatically there. There wouldn't have to be anybody from the assessor's office. There to. Ordinate anything, I'd say.
So this is, I I think it's. Think it's needed, but I just don't know. One. Question for you guys, is it in the budget? Is it something that we?
It's never been in the budget.
Right, that's what I mean.
It's never been sought out to this extent.
Right.
In the past, there has been a satellite office in the north end, which is an office, a cubicle with the fire department, which had access to nothing. It was a desk and a chair. So it's never used for a satellite.
Right.
You had no place to secure somebody if you made an arrest. You either had to leave them in the car or handcuff them to the chair. Which you can't do.
Well, that that was my next question was. Um, the hot time for people paying their taxes is usually um July, August, right? And then uh then the second half of the year, January and February, is there? Doesn't sound like it would work, but. Could we use Carpendale for a couple of days and then go to Bridley Town Hall and then just move it around?
Mobile satellite office?
Could we, is there something like that? I just try, I know it's only forty eight hundred dollars per year, but we always say we're going to save money and things, but it always ends up costing us more. In the end, and so I just just thinking out loud here, I know.
Well, I'm not necessarily saying this is something to save the cash, but this this.
It's more to serve the city.
There's been times that I walked in the in the front door of the. Of the annex down there and there was twelve people standing there waiting to come up and there was ten upstairs and eighty percent of those people there were from the north end of the county. Five of which I spoke to specifically took the day off so they could come here because they don't get off work at four o'clock, can't get here at five thirty.
How long will this building be available if it was?
I instructed the. A potential contract.
Should we wait till for the next budget? But that's just that question for you guys as well. I'm not saying no.
This base will not be available for me. But if we entered into a contract, say next month, we would renew that in twenty twenty eight.
So this became three year contract.
I'll tell my next question, three. They have to be yearly contract, that'd be yearly.
Well, I don't think that would be a problem.
Okay, my that will be my question. If we don't think it's working. Is it something we can pull out of, but?
I tried to find another avenue for this, but it was going to cost us way more money to put it into Department of Education building up there.
Yeah.
Just just the HVAC system itself was upwards of twenty thousand dollars.
For reference, a school offered us the primary school. And we went and looked at it, there'd be a lot of room there and could do a lot with it, but then we're looking at having its own HVAC and. Uh doing rebuilding and stuff like that and it was kind of questionable by how electric and stuff is going to work. But we was looking at twenty thousand dollars just to get it going. Then next year they could decide they want to put kids back in that school and kick us out. So. We would have no. We would put all our money into it and not be able to do anything.
And I will go out on a limb and say we're not going to find that sort of footage as uh office space before.
Would you? Wouldn't they build us a holding cell as well in there?
Yes, it's. We had no cost involved in that. I tell them how I want to set up and what I want done. The only cost that I would have into that would be the glat of glass.
It's all blank right now. He just built it and he's willing to build it however we want. And then the ethics committee, since he's a mineral county person? Yeah, so uh it is owned by Nathan Rice, who is a part time deputy with us. And I reached out to the ethics commission and I have a printout of the email conversation with them. Basically come down to uh her, their last question is came from Kimberly Weber. With the ethics and her last question was. Does his job duties give him any control or influence over which property the sheriff's office would choose? And I responded with no, he's just a deputy who served, which mainly entails security and prisoner transport. Those were his words. Uh, his personal business has rental properties and he has office space. He is willing to rent to the county for four hundred dollars a month. And her final answer was, okay, thanks for the clarification. Since the deputy does not have any duties that would give him any influence. Over which office spaces selected. The sheriff office does not need to get a contract exemption from the ethics commission. Uh, and they included a recent contract exemption with um. Roger. Uh, the previous uh contract exemption that they got with Roger Reel, Deputy Roger Reel. Who Roger does have some influence over what equipment and stuff goes in vehicles. So that's why that contract exemption was there. So. Basically, the ethics mission for in this email chain does not have an issue with renting to. Nathan Nice.
Dana's a role.
What's that?
His wife's employed by the sheriff as well.
I did not mention that, but she would not have any influence over that either, but um. I don't even think about Dana. I forgot about Dana working, but I don't even to that, but. Still, she doesn't.
Be the same as well, most likely.
Uh.
It'd be the same response.
Yeah. I would think so.
That's a question. The satellite office, is it to pay taxes only? No, I meant like. As far as like if they have bills in the system, they can pay them, right? It's not going to be where. They're making bills, right?
Oh, no, 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 no changes, no.
No, that's all going to come out.
They have that.
Office at the annex.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be that would be done here at the main office.
They would have to cut, if they don't have a bill in the system, they would have to come down here and have a bill made.
Yes.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, that's, I love the survey. They can research you and find out what your ability without having an antenna.
No, I think she's asking like if they have the wrong, if the vehicle's wrong on their on their bill, to change that, they'll have to come up to the assessor's office to change that. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, but also if they don't have a bill in the system. So they go to the satellite office to pay their bill. They don't have a twenty twenty five bill in the system. Okay?
Hmm.
So. Do they, they're still going to have to come down to the assessor's office?
Yes.
To for us to make the bill so they have a bill in the system.
Oh, yes, that would have to.
That's that's what I'm asking because otherwise I'm sitting here thinking, how would we know what the influence and stuff they have?
Yeah, they would have to. Basically, I mean, basically set up the taxes. And.
The basically satellite office is for people that's already got their taxes in there to be paid.
Yeah, I mean, well, you can't pay that until you've had your assessment through the assessment.
Right.
Right, that would have to be done.
Yeah.
That's probably that, right?
Yeah, I mean, we're not going to assess them unless they come in to be assessed. Or send in their papers.
That's something we wouldn't have any control of.
Right, okay.
Well, another expense that I was just thinking of would just sign each. Sign so that people know pulling here, that's be another expense, just. One time expense of something. That would be something else to think about.
Already talked about it.
Okay.
I don't think I'll need to do that.
How like transporting the money back up this way, I guess they'll be escorted by the a deputy or.
The available.
Do we have the bills available that?
That could be forwarded through the force system. Days we don't have work, we have manpower, I can send somebody up there. As I was saying, we're looking at right now potentially a few days a week.
You are you going to try to keep a bail off there all all the time?
Not all the time, just one of the taxes.
Okay.
Would you do the whole lock system above, all that kind of stuff through the right side of the zones? And the deputies would have the main access. My questions.
The security of the ES four hundred. What's that you take to protect the ES four hundred?
Et cetera, I have that here.
So you're gonna have cameras and stuff down there too?
That could be monitored from the outside.
Is this in the turn there at Sealy Plain?
It's on the way for something. If you're heading with.
Where's other businesses with the mulch?
Yes, very excited.
State Farm building is over there. It's gone. It's part of the.
The old state farm, the state farm insurance places there. It was stored down. It's moving if it was. Little.
They're already in.
I almost say it's a shirt mall, but basically it's just office complex. Three office there. Do we need to, do you need to? That timeframe, do you looking at to have it done or have it ready to go or?
Stone can be done within a month. Pathetically, so it will be every three, two weeks, by.
I'd like to make a motion before with it. Then allow it to go on, that's. Guys want to discuss it more or? Think about it or or if you all want to do.
I'd kind of like to see it. But I'd like to get some feedback. People. You know, you understand what I'm saying? I think it would be convenience for the people in that north end of the county. Uh, but then I know what I'm going to get hit with. Or we're putting one in your quote. Well. Serious, I know what you're coming. I'm just using your garden channel. I understand it comes from there, but are we going to put on this?
I mean, it need to know because it's just been looked at, the number of calls served. Compared to you compare, and I'm not. Either against Pete Martin or El Garden or any of this, or Pete Martin Astro or uh deputies in the area that do certain things, they got that. And it was noticed. I received calls thanking me for the extra manpower. But you. People on no garden combined is nowhere near the call services that be required from the north end of this county.
Right, I agree with you a hundred percent. So you're.
Not even close.
We're going to look at the population, you have, that's why I was in the county, so that's, that's kind of where I'm at.
Yeah.
And again, this, this isn't just catering to the north end of the county, it is helping the north end of the county, but it's on multiple bases here. It's not the one, my guys aren't having to travel an additional thirty minutes this way. Process and do what they need, then travel an additional thirty minutes back, just so they're taking somebody to the regional gym.
Well, I've thought about that too, I took that into consideration, because I think, I think about this stuff a lot. And that is, I know we're paying four hundred dollars a month, however, that could be saving on fuel. Help save a little bit on fuel.
So fuel, make this on your vehicle?
Yeah.
Overtime?
Yeah, it, it's, yeah.
That hour could be the difference between a deputy having to spend an hour of overtime while getting off on time.
Yeah.
That's the part about overtime, yeah, oh yeah.
You don't think about overtime?
Not in this incident, I didn't think about it, so.
I've looked at the frozen cards, I've run. It's all about. What do you guys think? Do you want to, do you want to make a decision or another couple weeks to think?
He already made the motion.
Well, yeah, I did make, I did make the motion, I mean, we can, good guys don't have to carry on with it, we can, you guys can think about it down the road. Um because I've been working with him on this and, and um I actually.
I think it'd be good.
I, I would love, I've been pushing for this, just because I've had people tell me that there's times that, just like he was said, you know, people have to take off work or have to take off half a day to get the Kaiser by four thirty to get their stuff done. Whereas if they had this office, even if it was only a couple of days a week or even one day a week. They could plan to, as soon as they get off work, they can get there, or in the morning before they go to work, they can get there and do it, and it would save them time.
Save them, it would.
That's.
What's the hours?
Well, it'd be however they want to set it up.
What is it again?
Hours.
Hours? You're not off the same hours you work here, eight thirty to four thirty.
That's when county employees is there, eight thirty, four thirty, if the deputies use is twenty four seven.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
But as far as the feedback, the different day you go, we get it. Take a day and drive up north.
Give positive feedback?
You're working well.
Haven't got anything yet.
Oh, I think it'd be, it'd be a benefit to their speed, there's no doubt in my mind about that.
And again, like I said, it benefits our department too.
It would benefit our.
Do your employees have to come up here first with the cash boxes and to drive down?
Say that again, Lauren?
I was asking if the boys would have to drive up, could they first get the cash box to drive down?
Isn't something that the sheriffs can deliver or that?
Really can operate without change, they have to be able to operate.
Set up to have two off two uh tax deputies work. Be the same as we have here, you have a safe with your door.
Um so would you take one of the ladies from the windows up here and really you're one of them and?
It's set up there too.
But you perhaps lay with her all the time.
It'd be, we're definitely, I guess, available for there.
He's a little with all questions.
Yeah.
Well, that's good.
Yeah.
I think I'll ask the question, I like that. So then our next meeting is when?
October fourteenth.
Yeah, October fourteenth, fourteen.
There's something that um he needs to know now Joel, so he can start designing though. Or did you already give him like a layout and how you want to set up uh lock?
I've explained to him of how I would like to have it set up and it's plenty of room to have what we need.
Okay. But the reason why I'm asking that question is that if we waited until the fourteenth, if that was that though, would be frustrating for you or?
Frustrating there, it's just going to put it off another level.
Okay.
Because I'm, he's, I'm not going to give him the okay to start designing and building this and and not be approved, he's not going to put money into designing something that's, if, if we don't use it up you lot, that so whoever does take that space will do something to it.
Right.
So. And again, I, I understand that was not put into this budget. And that, somebody said it earlier, it was first mentioned, honestly, it was first mentioned before it was all this. But it was discussed more after it took all this.
Yeah, well, what do you think? Keep looking at me. I'd like to benefit to people down, I really do, because there's a I hate to spend the extra money, but I'd like to see the people down there. It's like you say, it's costing them money, they have to take an hour off of work to come up here and pay their taxes, that might help them.
Hundred percent.
And I think it would be good for the deputies.
They have specific ones that have been, the single family or single air codes, whichever.
We could try this one, a year.
Yeah, I'll, I'll um just for the first, see that if it doesn't work, then this guy's put a lot of money into designing something for us too, I don't want to put uh Mr. Rice out either. If you don't agree for after a year, but I agree, I mean, that's a chance he's taken as well, so. Yeah, I'll, I'll second for the year, for the year.
You're, you're looking at an individual who is at the north end, was most likely heard comments about this. And if I step out on him, I would not think he'd agree, it is a good thing.
Okay, I said, okay, so first you feel about staging area. Okay, so I'll have to be on a mobile command. So when do you want this to open? In first of November is what you're looking at?
Uh ultimately, I'd like to get it up.
Well, that's about four, four, five weeks.
Yeah.
Okay, that'd be good, that'd be good, then was it ready to go, that timeframe, be handicapped accessible and all that?
Oh, yeah.
Handicapped accessible, Ed bargain.
Okay, there'll be a park right up, there'll be a pool right up to the front door and walk in.
No stairs, no elevator.
Okay. All right, what's your flow study consideration?
Uh Luke has here, we were just notified of extra H M E P funds that are available for commodity flow studies, I have no idea what H M E P is. Uh a commodity flow study is a study that shows what hazardous materials that are shipped through our county, whether it be by road or rail. Our last study is over ten years old and is no longer accurate, these studies are important for planning and preparedness. The cost of a study is seven thousand dollars, see attached estimate. The grant will pay eighty percent, which is fifty six hundred dollars, and the county will be responsible for fourteen hundred dollars. Is this something we all would be willing to provide the grant match for?
That we're going to have to pay.
We would have to pay fourteen hundred dollars.
In H M E P. H M E B.
As this material emergency point.
Mm-hmm.
Oh.
I figured it has some material, because that's what they, but I didn't know.
I was getting the hazards, but I was getting the hazardous material, but I couldn't get the. Lewis County and Barber, I mean, Lewis County Barber and also I'm sure in Randolph, they're all, since we got Porter Age going through there, they, they have meetings. Um talking about this, you know, you find out scrolling, as it is, all this stuff, and that way they can kind of plan and also know the cadence.
Whenever you go to a nine one one.
Ten years ago.
I don't know if you've ever been to them like I've been to them.
And they all, over ten years old.
They give you little scenarios that you, what would you do if uh this stuff would happen in your area, and we've went over that with Philly, the ones that I've been to. And yeah, the thing of it is, people don't realize what could happen here in the times, especially here.
What happened in Ohio with the train wreck there.
Yeah, we got a train wreck, we got, we got, we could have a.
And it's true, the train to go through here, so.
Can you approve pending the approval of the grant, so is that all in one thing?
But that, um.
He said, he's saying or it says it, that are available. Uh it's not really a grant, it's not saying it's a grant, but well, he is saying it's a grant down here, but it's just an extra extra H M E P funds that are available for commodity flow studies.
It's a seven thousand dollar proposal, or what it's called.
Yeah.
The grant pays fifty six hundred, we have to come up on fourteen hundred.
But that'd be something taken out of nine one one and Bernstein.
I thought maybe we could take it out of the sheriff's budget, he's got a lot in the west side.
I think he's in the negative now. He's not even looking up.
That there wouldn't be a bad thing to do, though.
You can have a couple four H car washes over there.
Concealed, you can have much of your concealed when you take it out.
Well, there you go, concealed carrier.
Yeah.
Or that's our concealed carrier.
No, you can't add that, Mr. President.
Uh you gotta have a little laugh once more, if you don't, just drive them nuts.
Honestly, I'm not sure what's in the tail carrier.
You could probably, probably use a female on that too, because what, if there's hazardous stuff traveling like rail and all this stuff.
Oh, they are.
Female crowd, that might be where he's looking for that grant. So.
I think there's certain areas.
We can always get a letter from the Congressman for you, for sure.
There's certain areas of hazmat stuff that involve state police totally too.
Mm-hmm, I know my brother drove a truck about all his life, and he said it would shock you what goes through these little towns if you knew.
Also with the, with the big push on terrorism.
Yes, yes. What's your thoughts, gentlemen?
I just would like to know where we're going to take it from first, before we.
Give me the fourteen hundred.
Yeah, the fourteen hundred. I know it's only fourteen hundred dollars with the amount of money we tossed out, but it still continues to add up. I personally think, I don't know if Luke's got it in his budget for nine one one, but.
We will be getting a check from Mr. Close.
I have the sixteen oh one.
And it says it's been, it's been over ten years since we've had the study done and probably changed quite a bit.
Yeah.
For, in, in for the, the planning and preparedness, it's for the uh L A P C, local planning and mercy, so.
This would go along with our, with our master plan for the county too, right?
Yeah, it would, if you get along with that, so. But I think we need to do it.
I do too, I make a motion, I just don't, just wondering where we get it from.
Well, make a motion, make it, then, then comes out on nine one one.
I make a motion, we take it out of nine one one.
Exactly.
Luke, if you're watching.
Nobody's watching, oh yeah, yeah.
Is there, I don't know who.
Just, I don't know if I would do that to him. He's not here to defend himself.
Makes a made the motion, get on them a month or.
I'll second it.
Oh, right, that's a done deal with motion made.
Just back to the, back to the uh the satellite office, does that, you have to be a budget revision on that when we get to that point?
Yeah, I mean, what the projected cost will be and then add that in.
Okay.
I should have it somewhere in your budget already.
Yeah, I, I don't necessarily think you're going to have to, um I've already looked at the, the cost of the bodies needed, I have money for that. Um I am looking to have uh money that was not expected to be in the budget much when the time comes. Um I don't think I have to do that. There, there's money coming back and so on the state from the sheriff's office. And have to pay for it with me. And thank you for any thoughts about that, that.
Is that about five thousand or stronger?
That's more, yes.
Yeah, that's just, that was just my unreal thought with them.
That's money that I would ask to go back into my tax office would help pay for, well, also would probably be paid for the first year. So there wouldn't be any need to, any budget revision at all. You know, the additional costs that would be added to that would be, if, if I'm thinking correct, it would be electric and internet. If that is correct, it would be internet.
Can you use the internet off their parks? And I just, park close enough to the building. That, open up the doors so the signal comes in.
Well, that probably worked for the deputies, but for the tax office, no.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, you done with it?
I am.
Okay. Are you sure?
I think so.
You can go up with one more question now, though you can.
Uh if Scott on here add to the agenda for discussion, uh this is something we, it's been brought up. Jason knows more about it, probably the rest of it, but we, instead of putting in for a levy fee, we can actually charge, we can, we can have a, a fee for the college. The students at ten dollars, that money could go to the ambulance authority, I'll let you explain it, I know about it, but not a lot.
I don't, don't know much, I think it's something we need to research more about and um and then get um get the administrator from Tucker County, they're more than willing to come up here and help us talk through this as well. David still the fee on their tourism, things that all the fee goes towards the ambulance of their, their ambulance. So it has to do with the Emergency Ambulance Service Act of nineteen seventy five. And um and that you can put these fees in place in certain areas. And the reason why I was thinking we should do a levy, because now we're taxing our citizens again. Or the citizens are choosing to be taxed again on top of that, so if not us putting it in place, it would be up for the citizen, then you got to have sixty percent of the voting, the people who vote in for that to pass. But the levy, um uh not the levy, the fee, if we instill, Morgantown just did this, not Morgantown, Mountain County just did this. Uh where all the athletes pay a fee for their ambulance service, it goes right along with their college tuition. So um it's just an example, my daughter, when she got her masters at, at W D U. She had over a thousand dollars in fees for campus use and all these different things, and scenarios went to school there. So it's on top of your, it's part of your tuition. So my thinking is that we look at something for the college, per semester, a hundred and fifty dollars a student or two hundred dollars a student who do use the services here, but um the citizens of Mineral County are paying for it, that we look at as instilling some kind of fee to the college. And how that works, I don't know a hundred percent, that's why I was hoping we can have Tucker County uh their, uh Brett Davis is more than willing to come over and talk to us about it as well, but it would bring in they have a thousand students, um that would bring in about four hundred thousand dollars uh towards the ambulance service, also keep levy at the citizens, I believe the citizens should continue to to invest in our ambulance service as well, so that's no decision needs to be made, doesn't need to be made quickly, I just want to make sure we begin the discussion and start looking at this possibility. Just an, an ambulance alone, um to start replacing some of our ambulances, but some of them are very old. Uh we're looking at a minimal of four hundred thousand, five hundred thousand is the, is the normal cost for them, and that's not even outfit. Yeah, just the stretcher alone is eighty thousand dollars for a stretcher, just to go aside to the ambulance. So they're, they're very expensive vehicles. And the levy is not going to cut it from.
There's, there's no one.
Two hundred and fifty, I can't believe, nobody can believe our county can run nine ambulance services off of two hundred and fifty thousand a year.
Yeah.
It's that's, they're doing a fantastic job on top of that, but there was, people, other counties are just amazed at how we're doing this song.
And we're, we're able to do that just because there were volunteers.
Because of the volunteers.
Oh, you could do it without, yeah, but it'd be done.
But the way the levy's set up right now, there's no way they can be able to put into, to. But the way the levy set up right now, there's no way they can be able to put into, to. Start replacing ambulances that are getting old. Um, although they, they have maintained them well and kept them up, but you're still looking at the newest one as a seventeen or eighteen?
Yeah.
Eighteen, so. I mean, you're going on most, majority of your ambulances are ten years old or better. Um, this use fee is something Tucker County put in, they actually put it on to the. The, like ski lifts and, uh, hotels and, um. Basically, they targeted a bunch of stuff, but they targeted stuff that, people that come into the county to visit, because like they said, they have sixty-five hundred citizens. That are paying for all the services that over a million people is using because they're coming in there. Um, and then you have, you have citizens where they have, they have one crew, one ambulance crew. And that ambulance crew is taking care of somebody on a ski lift, and you have a resident that needs an ambulance and they can't get one because. But their, their tax dollars aren't paying for one. Um, so it's just a way to be able to gain, garnish some funds for our ambulance. Um, but.
Tucker County, some of people had like a two, two and a half hour wait just for an ambulance to get to them.
But, but it's something to, to consider.
I think it's a good idea.
This, but it also taxes, just to speak up for Barbara Randolph. I mean, it also taxes a mutual eighty grand this month.
Oh, yeah, well.
Yeah, but they do, they do a wonderful job. I mean, it just blows a gambling.
The oldest one we currently have is a two thousand and four, and the newest one is a two thousand seventeen or eighteen.
She's going twenty years old?
Yeah, yeah.
West Virginia, average trip on a ambulance is sixty-two minutes. Because I mean, they're doing transports too, you know, I think Randolph County just enacted, they're not doing transports. Not elected, right, yes, they have to get back Medicaid, whatnot, just because like. It's just spread a few then, where are nice, so.
We would not be able to do it here, valid once a year, valid when they're transporting the nursing home and the hospital. They are a true, um, blessing to our county on behalf of that.
Well, you start transporting people, a lot of their transport's non-emergency, you know, and that ties up your. Actual emergency system that you can have in place, so.
So I don't know, what, I would like to try to figure out a date where we can invite someone from Tucker to come and, and just talk to us about. About it and, um, and come back with a date and have more discussions, is what I'd like to do.
Set up a works, uh, work session.
Like a work session type deal, but I, once I find a date, so, um.
Just, you give it a, if you don't mind, stretch it out a couple, three weeks.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm not in any hurry to make a quick decision, because this is going to be, this will be a big decision we make, if we make it, that's. I just don't want, and I don't want to have to tax, I don't want our citizens to have to decide what do they want to raise.
I don't want to raise, I don't, I don't either do that. And this will help us from going out, I think, when we take a very serious look at it.
Yeah.
What about somebody from Mon County who was in Mon County?
I don't know, I couldn't find out. I, I know that they charged all the athletes at WVU a fee to be able to cover the ambulance services.
Can we get, I can find out easily, okay. Somebody I know.
I, I don't have anything else on that, just.
All right, uh, one last thing from up this, I don't know if this has to be approved or not, but the not seamless gutter out of Fort Ashby. Luke got an estimate for this installation of gutter system around the courthouse and the family court annex. Now, my question is, does that have to be on there, does that gonna help the snowfall?
All right, yeah, that would, so this is just, uh, because I noticed at the end of the day, we was talking about it. Um, so in front of the magistrates, or, yeah, the magistrate building, or what we calling that, the annex.
Annex.
So that little roof that goes over the sidewalk.
Yeah.
There's no downspout on it, and there is no. Um, snow protection on it, my concern is, my concern is. Um, because of the extra traffic that we have now, of snow possibly building up and then falling down on somebody. Or even cars, those cars pull in there in part, you get snow or ice that would build up on that roof and fall down. And then, uh, if we don't have spouting on it, then you're gonna have water trickling off, you're gonna have bicycles and stuff like that, again. Danger ever falling on people, I think it'd be good to put spouting up and put some snow guards up. And then there's a little roof on the new addition on the courthouse, that's the only two places that this is talking about. Um, and I, I was talking to Doug about it down there and, and so we'll just call Joel and see if we can get an estimate. He talked about, talking to Joel, let's just call Joel and see if we can get an estimate on what it would cost, I was just curious what it costs, so we're looking at.
We're looking at twenty-three hundred dollars total.
Yeah, twenty-three hundred.
For the courthouse and then, seven hundred for the courthouse, sixteen hundred for the annex.
I know, probably won't count, but I'm assuming that would tie into, the downspouts will tie into the tur- current, uh, downspout system that's there. Or would go off someplace where it's not gonna be a problem.
But he's got downspouts here.
Yeah, he got downspout set up, and I never.
He's got a river.
I don't know, I don't know what Doug told him, I don't know, me and Doug talked about it down there, and I don't know what Doug told him for, if Luke got it, did it, or who did it, but. And that's something, we don't have to decide on that today, we can.
There are some concerns for me when I look at the assessment. We're talking damage, though. We need to put for both, both for the downspout. Looking for approval, and it will.
That's the, that's the courthouse.
Yeah, I'm, I know, we're twelve, fifteen foot, fifteen on the annex, twelve on the courthouse.
Yeah, your roof in the, on the courthouse is what it is on the annex.
Now, I know, but how much, uh, uh, two or three inch area, how much water will that take? Hey, we'll see, the tape is safe.
Okay, so this is just the, the piece that comes down. Oh, yeah, it would, it would handle that.
How much area is in Palm?
Well, you got thirty-seven feet of gutter. But, and.
So is this on the courthouse, is this just coming around the front?
No, no, this is where the elevator and stuff is, the new addition.
The new, just the new addition.
The new addition.
Got you.
In that little room where the, where the main entrance is.
Now, didn't we have an incident back there with ice coming off, you know, a lot?
That was on the main courthouse.
That's what I'm saying.
Up at the bell tower, but that door's not gonna be used anymore.
So we don't have to deal with that, you don't think?
But last year.
Yeah, I saw.
Annex, well, yeah, that, but on the annex last year. We really had issues and they had the ice and they had to go over and not follow, so now, like you said, now that all the traffic's gonna be there, it's much more of a concern.
It is.
I'm glad you're getting ahead of it.
Yeah, what's your thoughts?
Uh, we, again, that's why I'm so hesitant in spending money, because this building project isn't done yet. So, I, I, it needs to be done, and, and I wanna make sure we do it right.
I, I think now that you guys have that, I think you all need to go down and look at it, I mean, I know I looked at it and.
Yeah, I've seen it, so.
Yeah, I've been in a.
I've been asking questions about it the whole time.
I'm not familiar with the courthouse as much as I am with the annex, but yeah.
The courthouse one, I'm just wondering where they're gonna tie in, but the annex, you can tell where they can easily tie into the sound, down, down.
All right, I'll be honest, I'm kinda disappointed that, in the whole plans, that this wasn't, this wasn't included in the plans.
That's the first thing I thought, I've done included.
And then, and the one up high on the annex, it's not seamless, you can see where it's stripping through and staining the metal.
It's true, like, the fact that the green wasn't replaced with gray. But we can tell people, the gray, the green roof, and then they.
Yeah.
Do we need to make a motion here for this?
That could be, we don't, we can make a decision on that one, because it could be part of the courthouse and.
Courthouse, um.
Oh, yeah, courthouse.
Yeah, yeah, I make a motion, we approve to put up the gutters around the annex and the courthouse. Still not, still on.
I got this, I got it.
Okay, not seamless gutter, LLC.
He's good.
I'll second the motion.
So what do you want, do you want this, how do you? Okay, is that all we got?
Oh, we are good, that's.
No, we don't have anyone here. Uh, standing out, uh, while everybody's here, the tree lighting for Western Port. It is the day before Thanksgiving on November twenty-sixth at about thirty, it's on Wednesday night. So just throw it in there. Well, I just read it.
Is that Western Porter, Western Porter?
It's November twenty-sixth.
Yep. Five thirty.
Yeah, one's a mark in your calendars, March, October the first at noon in the courthouse for breast cancer.
Uh, let me get some of this, November first, wait a minute, November the first, no, November twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth.
Read that.
November twenty-sixth, yeah.
Twenty-sixth at what time?
Five thirty.
Okay, now, what, the courthouse, October first.
Breast cancer awareness.
What time, you want?
I'm sorry, noon, breast cancer, when is it, noon?
O'clock. Well, I'll have a bunch of the Western Port people, the mayor will be over at my house, silently, silently. Since they're. Yeah, you don't have nothing else to come for the permission other than the. News in the state script. So I go through our, our reports, and the reports, yeah. I got a big chunk of sales last year. This is, let's see, we're gonna begin with this.
Uh, yes, there's actually two sheets. Yeah, I have four H R sign in two, seven.
What about, wait a minute here, pull for alarm.
That's for the door at the magistrate that we talked about.
What do you want to do with that? We didn't move.
Yeah.
This is the, advantage computer, door control here, that goes with it. Here is the thing for the imp. I'm gonna call it a little birth, I'm studying, that we, that we did make a motion. This here is for. This really don't have nothing either, I will go on to that. Oh, this is about the voluntary money.
Oh, let's get very general, yeah, that's your package, yeah.
No, that wasn't in my.
Well, we did have a copy of it.
Yeah, all right, this here is for the.
Resolution.
No, this is for the.
That's for the, that's for that, those lawsuits. Those are the lawsuits we're talking about with the opioid money.
Well, it doesn't say opioid money, it just.
No, it's not, uh, but it's other stuff.
Espresso, right?
Is that what that is?
They need your authorization to sign, you have to sign.
I did.
Okay, then I, do I have to attach them?
Yes.
All right, CBGB, CBD, all this good stuff, we signed that.
Okay, so then another one.
I've signed it two places here.
And then I'll scan that sentence.
All right, this here, we need to, this, these here, you don't get, this is for us.
So what we're gonna do with that, I guess, or some way. I hate to do this, guys, it's the next meeting, October fourteenth.
Yeah.
I will not be able to make it. I will be in Charleston, but nothing.
Well.
What would you be down now? Will we be down in Charleston?
It's for something else, nothing, it's not anything but.
I, I was gonna say, if we push it to another day, I, I'm gonna be in Fort Canton, Minnesota, that, with my wife, so I, I'll be gone two weeks. After the meeting, go.
Do you want this, uh?
But we can hold off on any distractions that you're gonna be a part of, we can hold off, so. I'll get a few on the agenda, maybe before I pose it, we need to hold off.
This is the agreement on the man, on the.
Yes.
Bates, all the Bates have like.
You need, obviously, email chain, third office.
Okay, give it your.
Very busy, um, much for me as far as family crisis, so. Since the last meeting, uh, Mineral County Day meeting, uh, on the ten, September ten. Dutch was a part of that through Zoom. Um, and then September thirteenth, Western Port PMS banquet, I went to that. Um, nice little evening, this. I sent them.
No, but we don't give, we don't.
Told them that you all were, I'm certain you couldn't make it.
I was, I was planning on coming, I got an emergency call, I had to leave, I had to go.
And then you all said hello as well, going down, I'm sure, I didn't get back to you. The health department meeting was held, the planning meeting. Uh, I went to the building commission meeting on the eighth, and that was also canceled, but I was. So the building dedication on the nineteenth, we were all there.
Yeah, we were there.
Yep, and then on twenty-first, Sunday, by Zoom, I attended the, uh. Washington County Commission Association, through Zoom, the board meeting. I attended that. And that is a.
I'll call back and answer the question. Answer those questions.
That it?
That's it.
I was at the West Virginia, uh, I went to the Western Virginia State Treasurer's Regional Meeting in Northfield. Uh, that was on the twelfth, and I was at Region Eight signing fund statements, and, and, uh. I worked, I worked all day at the blood drive and burned the eighteenth. And I was at the courthouse dedication, of course you know that, and I wanted to go to that banquet, but I got called out. So, that's, this business two weeks have had, and it hasn't been much for the county.
Don't forget about the, uh, the twenty-fifth, the ribbon cutting.
The ribbon cutting, I don't know if I can make it.
Okay.
It's at ten o'clock.
Ten to one o'clock.
Yeah, I, I talked to somebody about that, I'd like to go to that, if it rains, I might go there.
Okay.
If it doesn't rain.
North of Grumman. That's the twenty-fifth.
Yeah, but, did you guys go? Yeah, but did you guys go to the forum?
What?
Cut up the dedication that we filled up here.
No.
I haven't had time.
Cause it's only two weekends a month, probably.
I know, well, a lot of this is what them know.
We never end a minute soon.
Been here three and a half hours already.
Cause of me, this does.
All right, uh, last commission meeting, I was at the, of course, the Merrill County Day Planning Meeting. Uh, is also on Zoom for a T E R A meeting, uh, wasn't really a meeting, it was kind of just. They were talking about some of the changes through P E I A, I think the County Commission Association had that set up. Yes, and then of course Friday the twelfth, I was at the State Treasurer, State Treasurer in Horney County in Morfield. Uh, Monday the fifteenth, I had a phone call with Christie DeMuth, she is the version of W V U, the planning commissioner, been working with on a, um. Just left me. Uh, the whole planning, um. What's that?
Comprehensive.
Exactly, exactly. Um, yeah, so, yeah, so I had a meeting with her, uh, to go over some things, trying to, trying to get it up, and the. If you guys are available, I'll let you know ahead time, the planning commission meeting this month. She will be there, I'm sorry, next month, in October, she will be there, and we will go over more detail of the. Of the comprehensive plan, and it'll probably be, we're getting down to where we're close to the final draft.
Where, where she be?
Up at, it'll be up to Health Department.
Okay, do you know the date?
Yep, me. That would be the fifteenth. Of August, you'll be out again.
I'll be out of town, but if you guys zoom in or conference call, I'd get a copy of it from Phil.
Yeah, you wanna send that out?
Yeah, I'll send that out.
Good.
Wednesday the seventeenth. Nope, nothing there. I missed the construction, well, yeah, they canceled that one, didn't they? With the courthouse dedication, I was at the Short Gap, uh, Fire Department Wing Dinner. Help, help them a little bit with that, and Sunday I was at the. Um, County Commission Association, West Virginia Fall Board Meeting, and that was Sunday, Monday.
That was a snooze fest on that, watching that video, being a part of that through Zoom.
Yeah. Yeah, we do, we had some issues there.
That was from the same, or?
Sunday, Sunday and Monday.
And, uh. Oh, so this, uh. Okay. My mind's going ten million different places at once, I've had a lot of phone calls about the transmission line, I had that in there. And discussions, there was, I had a discussion today, uh, I'd gotten a message about a post on Carperdale's Facebook page. And it dealt with, somebody stated. If it's still up, they, I think they just want to take it down, but. See if it's still up, and I, I wanted, I wanna say it in here, so anybody watching can, can see it. And it looks like, okay, so somebody took it down, so it had to do with a bill that was introduced in the House. And it was Bill twenty six zero one. And it basically deals with eliminating property taxes on personal vehicles. Posts on Carperdale's page said that that will take effect January one of twenty six, and that. Nobody would have to pay any property taxes on personal vehicles after that, that's what the post said, um. However, that is wrong, uh, and they even said that they have a personal friend who is a delegate that told them that.
Is that a House bill or Senate bill?
That's a House bill. Twenty six oh one was introduced in February of twenty five, and it is to do just that. However, it went to House Finance Committee on February the nineteenth of twenty five, and it's still there, it did not go through, and it was not voted on. Uh, and was basically dead, so I don't know what delegate gave this person information that there would be no. Taxes on personal vehicles, and that got posted on Facebook on Carperdale's page. And it did get, it got some, it had some comments and shares and stuff like that, the post is now off. Which I quickly researched it and knew that it was, was wrong, the information was wrong, and. Made the proper phone calls and got it removed or clear things up, but I just wanna make it clear here to everybody that it's. That that's not true, so, and what the truth is, so anyways. Um, what do you want done with that letter that you gave us? Lauren needs to take care of that?
It's gonna take a while because I did, I did, I did, the budget revision, we did some. And was it last, I don't even have a budget in the. I already had that one back in the state, so I had to do that one, and there's, uh. Stuff to do for my financial, that's due before October fifteenth, and then doing that. Um, yesterday's, um, we did voter registration at the high schools, and we got ninety two registrations.
Oh, that's good.
We did most of them, some of them didn't win their phone, we had about twenty seven of them on their phone, the sixty seven fell out. But we did, uh, Kaiser in the morning and Frank in the afternoon, Secretary, uh, Warner came up to Frank in the afternoon. And, uh, so it was really good turnout, they're both, they're both aiming for the Jennings Randolph Award this year, so we're gonna see if we can get those schools. Um, qualified for the Jennings Randolph.
That'd be good. Be really good.
Just reiterate, that does not include electric, that office has a meter.
Okay, okay, so I misunderstood, or I was wrong.
You had me thinking of.
Well, I was thinking he said all utilities was included, but.
I know water, sugar, and trash.
That's a lot of things.
Um, I knew something else, and, and that just hit me what it was. Fountain, the Pearl Hall Water Project, it is coming down to where it should be finished, they're saying, contractors saying now will be the end of the month. But there's been a little bit of excitement over this, uh.
Because.
You're kind.
Not good.
You've been kind.
Yeah, um, so I answered some questions Rick Hillenbrand had, that. Somebody from over there had sent him an email and asked him some questions, and I've answered those questions. And it had to do with the, why the project didn't go back Hillbilly Heaven Road, or Hillbilly Heaven Lane, or whatever that is back there.
Yeah.
And it's because out of that area, only two people signed up, and it was not. Efficient to run water back to, for two people, and that was done back in January, sometime in twenty twenty two. Um, there was another person. Delegate Howell, who is claiming that he is funding for his constituents, and he wants to know why, what. He's stating that the project was fully funded. Um, it could have been fully funded if people were to sign up, nobody, like I said, I think he signed up. So it was not fully funded to include Hillbilly though. He's telling everybody that it was fully funded, and he doesn't understand why it wasn't run back to. And now he's went to Region Eight and brought it up with Region Eight, and he didn't get a result from us that he wanted, he didn't get the result from. Uh, anybody else that he, that, or from Fountain, he first he went to Fountain PSD, then he came to the county commissioners. And now he's going to Region Eight, and he's not getting any answers that he wanting to hear, he's wanting water over there, he has a. Piece of property over there, and he's wanting water of that piece of property. But he's saying that he's doing it for his constituents, and he doesn't have any constituents over there, because that's District eighty eight territory, which is Rick Hillenbrand. And I was answering Rick Hillenbrand's questions, and taking care of Rick Hillenbrand, and now all of a sudden. Gary, of course, Rick started it because of Gary, and then now Gary's went to Region Eight, and I just talked Region Eight today. About it, and sent her all the information I have on it, and I don't know what the deal is, but. He's trying to get water for herself over there, um. And I don't know, it wasn't fully funded, it was, it wasn't fully funded to include Hillbilly Heaven. I've not found any proof that it was.
Back when that was started, I'm very familiar with that, and that was supposed to have been done in two steps. The first step was the main line, the second part of it was supposed to go back then to where they're wanting it now, because the, they, they had a grant. To put that second step in, it wasn't going to fall terribly nothing, who killed that, I do not know, somebody shot that down. But that was in the works, and you ask, call Jerry, he'll tell you, cause he. He went, Jerry's wondering if he seen that and got that, and I know that's how that went.
Forty R K and K, nobody signed up, and when it came down to.
There's only a couple signed up, I know that.
But what was the ones where people got their checks returned?
That was a two in Hillbilly Heaven.
Okay.
The one guy.
That's when I started looking for bills, this is a real stack of bills.
One guy questioned me down.
No, I'd like to stay here for another two hours.
Well, if there's a big old stack of bills, you might be there two hours.
I was making sure I was rolling my hand this morning. Thanks for helping my first guy.
You're welcome, I know about this some help for.
Yeah.
You know.
It's all gonna work out for it.
Yeah, I'm just, I was glad that she said that he had a will.
Yes.
I was glad to hear that, that makes it easier.
Yeah. Cause way, way.
Yeah.
I've, I got, I'm not gonna be looking at it, I don't want to kiss you.
He didn't add you to the Google Drive?
What's that?
He didn't add you to the Google Drive?
I, I can't get into it.
Oh, you can't.
Trying forever, like, hey, they keep sending stuff Googles, but I can't open it up.
Oh, you do have an Apple.
No, uh, it's all through the internet, Google Drive should be.
Yeah, Google Drive is, uh, in the cloud.
Well, yeah, the thing for me, the reason, it took me a while to get my email set up, because I have all these blocks. I want to hear, uh, when I travel overseas, and, um, so I had to get, call our IT guy down in Tyrone. To get all that stuff to move, so I, it has to do something with that.
Not sure you made this.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, and for all the questions.
Well.
I don't mind questions at all.
I don't, you know, I just.
And what else really do you have, hadn't had time to put down.
People don't realize the questions.
Even moving forward, just to take it, you have time, this, well, that, why didn't you stop that?
Yeah, if, if, I don't know how many questions these guys could ask, but you would, you wouldn't believe the questions to ask.
I bet if you could tell me you don't want my answer, the north end of this county has been neglected pretty good, they don't care, I'm like.
And to a point, you're right, can't say they're wrong about that.
Anyway, thank you, John.
Yes, ma'am.
No, I was gonna ask Lauren, Chris, a question, I can't remember what I was gonna ask him.
Let's take it all.
That's, yeah, yeah, you, yeah. Take care.
Yeah, which has a map, so I should be able to open up things.
That's true, because. Right about that, I just like pick one apple people every chance I get.
Courthouse. I'm anxious to start seeing what their electric bills are gonna be now that things are almost fully up to running. With that addition.
Well, you'll love a couple of these in here, Roger.
What's that?
Said you'll love a couple of these in here. What were you looking at?
The honorations.
What's the date on?
Uh, one's the twenty.
You don't have to, you don't have to do that.
Seventy three dollars, seventy four cents.
Why, they get this certain, if they're over a year, you, you do not have to do it. Now, I don't mind three dollar. But when it gets to be a bunch of months, listen, here's my thing, if people can't take care of their business, or they got a little deal for five years, do you really? Want to pat them on the back for that?
That's my whole thing.
Just like me and, and, uh, uh, series radio, we had a few words the other day. I've been with him for a long time. You know what they did to me? They didn't call me. They didn't send me nothing about my, what my bill come due, they just automatically put forty seven dollar charge on my credit card every month, and that, that's supposed, I don't do that. And they said, well, we can't reimburse you, and I said, that's fine, I just canceled my credit card. And I said, don't send me nothing else, I'm not. I don't have nothing to do with you, can't, can't be trusted. I don't like somebody doing that to me. So, I'm a little longer here. I have that on my. They would have treated me right, I have.
Airport authority.
Order of contribution. Seven hundred, seventy thousand nine hundred.
Yeah.
It's thirty thousand a year.
Will they count me to, to be a part of it?
When we put our, so there's two hundred and, two hundred and forty thousand, did it forty, you put forty thousand in?
Thirty.
Third.
Thirty.
There's two hundred and thirty thousand dollars from West Virginia, two hundred comes from the state, thirty comes from us. And then there's two hundred and thirty thousand that comes from Allegheny County, Maryland.
Wow, okay.
And that is, that is a, that is a pact between West Virginia and Maryland. Um, the pact actually says that the two are to split the operational costs of the airport. Well, the operational cost of the airport's a lot higher than that, than four hundred and sixty thousand dollars, but. I've asked about, I went to Gary Howell and asked him about if we could. Re-look at that, revisit that for more money because of the operational cost, and he said absolutely not.
Oh, why, why is that absolutely not, did he give a reason?
He, he said that last, or a couple, two years ago, uh, a delegate from down in Eastern Painthandle. Did everything he could to stop that money, and in fact, did succeed in not paying the state's two hundred thousand to the airport. Until, uh, they found out that there was a pact, and they couldn't, and they couldn't not pay it, or. That they had to pay it, they couldn't not pay it, and that, uh, they're. Evidently, there's a favor that they're putting more money into Martinsburg Airport than they are Cumberland Airport, so they don't. Way, way he said it anyway.
Okay, this is names wrong on this one. I don't know if it'll make a difference, but I'll pull it up, I'll show you here in a minute.
So the fourteen thousand going through the library. That's just part of our.
Yeah, they're all quarterings except the historical society is a thousand dollars. So we paid them a one lump sum. Tucker County Community, Community Foundation, Tucker County Community Foundation is the one thousand five hundred. We paid them a lump sum. And, um.
To help the thousand twenty-eight thousand.
No, that's divided. That's quartered. That's a hundred and seven thousand nine hundred and then nine thousand in rent. I think it is nine thousand and eight.
Six thousand I thought in rent?
Six thousand in rent, okay. So it would be one thousand two hundred and fifty for rent.
That's building out there to help for, don't look that big with just the metal roof. Have you seen it?
No, after the plan, like, I think same thing here, but that's not very big.
It does look big.
Yeah. And then the ambulance authority asked for their quartered sixty.
That's their levy.
Yeah.
So that's, uh. And then there should be one for every fire department except New Creek because New Creek does a full payment at the ends of the year. They don't, they don't like his quarters.
Well, why is that?
They just, I think they're still using it. I don't, I don't know if they're still just using that because they're trump payment and they just think they just get it all the once. Not sure.
Okay.
That's what they ask. So that's what we do.
What was, um, when I was sitting in there with my sister, what was that found? That when in your office, like.
Oh, that's our numbering. That's our standard. We number the documents that are recorded. Uh, all the documents that are reported today, tomorrow morning, we go through and as part of the process. Like the deeds, we look at yesterday's last page ending, making sure that today's page number started right. Then we stand each of those page numbers.
Okay.
And then we scan those deeds in. Then we proof the indexing that the prior day employee did, a different employee proof. So the same eyes aren't looking on it. And then at this point, a third eye is looking at it just to make sure just where we post it, but.
Yeah, it was, um, it was hard to think like, uh, like you would start down a conversation. My sister looking at me goes, I am, that is so messing me up on my butt from this. Had no clue what it was.
Well, of course, we used to be upstairs above the sessions office and every morning that all they heard is that.
That's awesome. You should just pound on the wall so that they're. Oh, there's too many bathrooms in between you.
No, um, well, yeah, because they have a break room in between. I just say, um, the bulk wall borders there all directly.
Hmm. That would be, uh, fun just going there and do that. I didn't see in the jail, uh, lucky bill anything. Did, did you have the notice up yet for jail one, if it's going about or?
I did look at it when it came through, um.
Probably in here.
What I'm mostly checked for is when I get them all through and I'm glancing at them, I just make sure they're consistent. Was it prior month? If there's a large increase, then you know, we question what might be going on. But unfortunately, if it's still just as high as it was, it's gonna vary some, um, and then we go through and look a little bit more detail when we enter it into the system. But usually I'm checking like out the water bills too. If I see a big increase.
Yes.
Look for a water.
Yeah, if you want to look through them, yes. Sometime. I'm gonna sign the air already signed them, right? Oh, yeah.
Don't like that. Hands off.
Yeah, see when I missed that. Right here, I did not, third one up on the right side. His name's Felton. That's Chris's feature.
Yeah.
Supposed to be.
Peter, Peter.
Yeah, I knew Chris.
Okay. Um, I'll have her ready, have it ready for you when you, are you coming to the October, the breast cancer awareness on October the first?
You mean to resign that?
Yeah.
You know, I'm, if nothing happens.
Okay. Well, I just have it down there for you to sign. I don't want to take a special trip for it.
Well, uh, this week here, I might be coming through guys who. I gotta go. I gotta go out of town tomorrow.
You say don't make a special trip or just might.
Just trying to.
Talk them on that day.
Pencil what it does to Thursday. I gotta get the rest of that done back there for that wedding. If it don't rain, if it don't rain, you send my apologies to them. If it rains, I'm going down to Northwood Drummond.
Okay.
If it doesn't rain, I don't know if I'll make it. It all depends on what I get done tomorrow even when I get home from. Morgan. He, I should have took pictures. You, we've got, we've got, I told Justin, I said, Justin, what you need to do is not turn this down. It dawned to a fit. I, I, I said, what you need to do is put you a metal roof on this. We got, it's forty-six to forty-six posts in her yard. We got, you already see that, how we got it. We got posts going out this way, posts going this way, posts in the middle. Now we got stringers running across. So we put that tarp. I'll tell you, that's, that's a lot of work, buddy. I, I started right after church Sunday, we started cutting posts. Justin said, hey, do it, we gotta start. And I started cutting posts. I cut posts Monday. I even cut a few today when we built that little arboretum for. Man, it's been a job. We drilled post holes, hanging all that stuff. I've been working on the road. I got to get, I gotta get that road just a little bit better.
Um, one thing about too, the meeting on October the ninth of the ambulance crew. Or that was, no, that was for the fires. Was that for the fire reviews? That was for the fire reviews.
Uh, well.
Yeah. So that meeting's canceled then?
October night?
No.
No.
No, no, no. Uh, well, Dutch want me to sign here in your place.
Huh?
Discussing, I'm meeting reviews.
Yeah, we won't have to do it.
We won't have to do that.
The ambulance and firefighter meeting, so that.
Yeah, firefighter meeting supposed to be it.
Yeah, but you were requesting the trentures or whoever does the bolts to also be there.
They still don't.
Okay, but you're not.
They haven't had, no, late, no, just, we did it the meeting. I wouldn't say another word because they haven't had a firefighters association meeting for months. Because they don't get enough people to show up and get it worked.
The last one they had.
Trenture or the person who the bolts doesn't qualify.
They can still come there and represent the fire department.
This American Rescue Plan for fourteen thousand dollars. I'm gonna sign in Dutch's place.
Yeah, as long as, as long as those three signatures are, we don't really care what order.
You sign a bug, don't you?
No.
Did I sign the wrong place?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Or you did the other ones too?
No, you didn't.
Oh, okay.
No, I'm not worried about it. I just wanted to let them know, make sure it's all right. Oh, boy, I tell you. No, I got, I'll be in town. Uh, I'll be passing through town a couple of times. Uh, Friday, I gotta go to Cumberland. We gotta pick up a bunch of chairs for Cumberland. They were supposed to be delivered and they called and said, we can't deliver. If you want, we gotta come and get them.
Our sister Valerie's getting married on Saturday too.
Who is Valerie? Where's she getting her, uh?
Uh, over at, um, what's that subdivision in behind the high school there?
Yeah, I know what you mean.
Uh, up in there.
I thought about, I've honestly thought about putting a new road in back to Chris's. And taking the top of that hill back there. We get to Chris's house and build me one of theirs, uh.
Wedding barn?
Wedding barns, but leaving most of it open, just, just, uh, like the one over there at Springfield is. My cousin was, my niece was, great niece was Berry Hill, uh, Berry. Might as well say Berry. She had a wedding over there here back in, uh, uh, it was just July, I think, August. But anyway, the, uh, cost four thousand dollars rent that and it's nothing.
Yeah.
It's crazy. I thought about putting one back here someplace and just starting out cheap. You know. Cause it got a few for you. I'll put it in the right place. You can see the windmills from one direction. You can see clear up, you can see almost Maysville. That's how far you can see. And then the others are actually, you can see clear over Patrick Creek Mountain, the beautiful new Patrick Creek Mountain. That's why Morgan wants to get ready back there in the yard. But it's gonna be nice.
Good segments on lines. All global truck out there.
You just want to initial the bottom there to purchase order where Roger's sign, that's fine to do.
All medium, okay.
But if, if it's, if it's raining, I'll try to come down to that Thursday.
Okay.
But if it's pretty, there's no way I can do it. I don't know how I'm gonna get it done Friday. I might have to get, maybe I'll let Chris take my truck and go pick up chairs. I'll be direct, finish up the other stuff. Might have talked to him about that anyway. He's all through, you know?
Benny?
Huh? Benny, oh, it is, was Benny hanging on that?
Yeah.
It's sweep off all weed or?
I, I don't know. I don't know how long it's taken off. He just told me yesterday, he said, hey, you wouldn't be here, but that was about it. You know what's going on. You don't know what's going on.
When I think that Sandra's off, so I'll go ahead and get some of that stuff. Like I said, I'll do that one that it's the engine region eight. I'll, uh, scan and send that to Bo so he can have it.
You know, you know. I'm sorry. You know, Carla, she comes down here and sits up. She was still. She's, she ate something the other day. She's been, she's not good. She is. Yeah. What the doctor's saying, but she's got, it, it's.
Yeah.
You see it this time?
Looks wet, is it?
No, it's like, really greasy.
It, it kinda looks wet from here.
Yeah, it does look wet up here.
My attention that. You know what?
I've been on it.
No, if anything, I thought maybe it was a little greasy then. This is greasy.
Yeah. When you run your finger through it, it doesn't leave a mark.
Yeah, but naturally your finger, your fingers should have.
Yeah, yeah. Almost like floating. I don't think I'm, sometimes she's, I'm not looking, I don't have time to look.
Nobody got that. Got wrong kinds.
Well, you know.
There are lipstick these times.
Yeah.
There is one in here that says sign.
They ought to be signed, I love one of them, but. I'm not really.
Jordan Hayes, that would be.
That Jordan Hayes vault, uh, that comes under, uh, the, um.
Chase car?
Chase car.
Chase car, yeah. Four hours. Or eighteen hours. But just go ahead and follow on the date I can go inside. Yes. And I never thought it would follow on my question. Well, didn't.
I asked you, I saw your next show.
I tell you one thing, I do like, I do like the idea.
Okay.
And, um, there's this one here that I really do sign Jordan.
That often on the dash, usually what happens is when we get electric bills, we have to spread them out and water bills, we have to spread them out.
Because. Name, when you get a big stack name, you know how hard that is?
No problem.
I like this a lot better.
So, it's good. Yeah. Okay.
Lawrence will finish up our, well, September being first quarter. Lots of, yeah, all September yet. So the next meeting, can you provide a, uh, budget for them?
Yeah, I was gonna do one this time and then I thought, well, I have to have that budget revision posted and, cause that's gonna change some figures. So.
Yeah, we just have one for the next meeting. I like to try to do them regularly every.
Four, every so.
Yeah, I actually thought about printing out right before and I thought, no, I haven't done that budget revision. So should wait until the, have the budget revision done too.
Okay. So I'm looking at, uh, August thirty-first one, that the one. The one we for. Okay. Let me see if I can, they might already sign those on the last, last meeting. Um. But so, once I look at the, that date, the fifteenth, it was twelve. Well. Okay, if it pops up here, I'll, I'll get your, take a picture of it. So. All right, thanks. Okay. Oh yeah, September, all right. Well, no, this says August, August thirty-first. No, this is pay period. This is, what I'm looking at is pay period.
You get paid twice, twenty-five, that's the sixteen.
Yeah. Yep, of August.
Then, then she'll.
Yeah.
I think he has one printed up completely. Yeah, that's. Henry.
Okay, well, September, okay. We will, I will take a look at the findings. Thank you. Yeah, all right. So Lauren's, how if she from the first through the fifteenth of September, um, she forgot to fill in the fifteen, so you can twelve hours certainly see that in there. Um, she didn't catch it until after she had sent it. I'm, I'm only in August here.
Have you heard anything about the ticket we got some? Anything?
It was me.
Did, did he pay him back?
Uh, totally.
Joe paid him, okay.
Yeah.
These are the August phones. Yeah, then.
These offer you.
Dude, where's the western state this kid? One ticket. Three hundred dollars. Oh, and I'm that could be, I know that. You don't get four of them.
This is, uh, for the, this is for that amount of wine. This is for the weapons. Weapons training for the new officer, for the new dispatchers.
Man, listen.
There it is. As she said, on the fifteen, seven, twelve.
And that one.
We'll write that on there.
Is that not even paid with paid here anything? Is that not even paid with paid duty that?
That's the fifteenth, fifteenth.
First, okay, that's what Kim working on right now.
Right, so she says she was trying to email Kim and just hadn't had her.
I'm gonna miss that in a minute.
Okay.
So I can go ahead and write that in?
Oh, yeah. They already, are these ones from the last meeting?
Uh, yes.
And let her know. You want to put that one on top or leave it in the order then?
I'd put it on top, please. That's that grant, um, it's the best friends grant.
Okay.
And it's for the number of dogs and cats that are picked up. And that was April through June. Which. That's for my next budget revision, just to put that grant money into our line item that I. Didn't have on the last budget revision and just, I forgot. This is the big board.
And, going right here, did I have someone on time?
Okay, did everything else in that staff?
Uh, he's, uh, what the?
First of fifteenth, September?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And Roger, did you see that?
Um, it's in the time sheets, yeah.
He's okay with the, um.
I trust him, we all got the office heads, you know? The, the, does the office heads that sign off on it?
Yes.
I took enough to make, for the, um. You didn't sign it?
I did, missed it. No, that's all right, I saw everybody, everybody misses it. Alright, now what do we got?
And I double checked, I mean, I still get back, well, you probably did, missed at least one or two, you know?
Way I, I'm gonna be honest with you, the way I see it, if, if I miss something like this on here. And Dutch signs it, Jason.
The chances are you did see it, you just.
I just forgot, I looked through all the top and then I go down and see what you're for, but, uh.
You're going.
Time sheets?
We already signed these.
Well, those went to the last, in that last meeting you were at.
Oh, mine shows on there.
On that one? Is that the one she has, I know the one that it went to last meeting?
Went to meeting on nine, nine, twenty five.
Oh, there's already.
I don't think that was, I was just going.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll shut the retarder, I didn't retard all the hours. So you have to retard.
Okay, so you don't have that. But you still. Well, the time sheets always have, and I'm always jacking them before we send them, but then. But now we're sending them, you wanted to see them before we paid them, so now we're sending them, like Kim's actually working on payroll today. And then before she left, she gave me the stack to bring down here, and tomorrow she'll finish payroll. Uh, the one forty eight was sent to three D, um, church, I repeat one day. Uh, the, um, since I had, I just print it off those receipts. Um, and then daily loans and, uh, costs, TPM. And resource, but resource, uh, family resource and more fields, that one I did not have any agreement on or anything.
Is that the one for ten or?
Yeah, but Costa and T P M, we've had their agreements, daily ads and everything on that.
Joel did not sign, well, at least. Well, whoever needs to.
You, you want me to go through and sign all these too?
No, no, that's.
Top, the one with the clips.
Just the one with the.
Clips, there's multiple clips.
Yeah, that's what I mean, the top one with all the clips, one managed to.
Yeah, so each, yeah.
I put them, Lily's on top there.
Now, Lauren questioned. Bottom line, never mind.
Well, it, we're not, doesn't really matter, it's fine, as long as you sound wonderful.
That'll save me one.
I had to beat me up, I had to get, well, put my, actually put my glove on my right hand, and I'm like, it was hurting so bad. Wake me up at two o'clock in the morning, oh, it was awful.
That's what they were saying about, um.
It was.
Like, um, the president shakes so many hands. And those guys, you know, with police officers, soldiers and stuff, just grip them, and that's why his hands all blackened then.
Oh, I knew that.
So many people's hands all done.
What you're saying, what a grip everybody had.
Yeah. And everybody's like, oh, he's not in good health, he's not in good health, he's like, oh, it's from shaking, I'm like, people hanging.
When you do shake somebody's hand, you wanna have a firm shake, but then you gotta catch yourself, sometimes you guys don't wanna.
Break it.
Yeah, hurt their hands up.
So who is? That on our screen?
I don't know.
UK. Oh, maybe here, almost gonna zit.
How many apps?
Say, that's, uh, quite a box of bills right there.
Hey, they were all, no, they're still not gonna do that, actually, no. It's a screen change, oh, and screen change.
I see.
Oh, okay, yeah. I'm gonna head and lock the back door. I got one more job for you. Yeah, stretch that band down over that.
Wow, God, he's certain it's bad for them.
Uh, sorry, I need to move, I don't. I don't move, I sit at the house all night, and I get up and move once in a while, I have to. I just can't sit there, boy, last night when I was sitting down, I'll tell you, I'm thinking, I was hurt.
And Tracy, um, I guess years ago, watched all the town in the abbey series or whatever, I just couldn't bring myself to do it. But she asked me if I would sit and watch him with her, and then go to the movies, and so, I've been sitting there watching it. I'm like, wait. He's like, what? I said, they make fun of West Virginians and marrying thousands and everything, and I said, and England, that's all they do is. Marry their relatives, she's just scared laughing so hard, I'm like, she said, but they're rich, we're not.
You actually mean so much? You didn't say they should do something.
Um.
No, we went down the other end.
Man, I don't know, you said we're behind.
A lot of bills.
There was a lot.
Oh, and they make fun of us, or in their videos. I swear, with this face of your stuff.
Fortunately, that's a question on a marriage application, um, are you related, but I always say no West Virginia Joneses, cause we don't allow. Other county or other states, but they do, but it's actually a question on our marriage application.
Everybody.
And, and even though we just checked, I still got them as some, you want.
What, then you, they used to require blood samples, yeah. That hasn't been for a good while, but.
Well, that was actually for Simples, I believe. The life hasn't.
Oh, really? I thought it was a DNA, I thought it was like a, a DNA test, although, oh, okay.
No, they, they were going that, went through the.
Little baby that passed. Yeah, you know, the mother's mess, um. I don't know what you did, it's like, but, but anyway, they had, they do, that's one of their different diseases. She come up clean, oh, oh, that's good, that's a very good, you are seeing her, she's just cute.
Well.
She smiles all the time.
But then to play on Jocelyn's soccer, and, uh, yeah, I was, but I was watching them, and other little kids are just so.
Oh, they're.
They're adorable.
I got hit up, it cost me fifty some dollars Friday to come down here to this dedication.
Now, what do they call you though? Pappy, okay, cause the one game, um, what's the little blonde haired boy, little? Okay, and he was asking, I, I don't know if he was saying Pat Pat or Pappy.
Yeah, he probably Mark or me.
Okay, cause then Luke said, no, he's not coming, he's not coming, and he's like.
Then, but they hit me up, normally, when I take them to the Burger King, it costs us. Uh, the last time I went to Burger King, it cost ninety some, no, I'm lying to you, what, or he was, Derek.
Dairy Queen is expensive.
Cost me ninety some dollars.
Yeah, just for one chicken finger meal, eighteen bucks, and with a drink.
You're getting the wrong one, uh, you don't cost me that much.
Well, there's, I'm an animal three, but I want four pieces. Uh, I'm hungry.
Hey, I'll tell you where yours is, you like to chew the fingers?
Yeah.
I'm trying to chew.
Yeah, 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 they do.
They're, they're very good, and I like the ones that Derek would chew, but they wanted to go to the dairy barn. And it wasn't too bad, it cost me fifty some dollars, yeah, the dairy barn. But, you know. They love it, I don't care. I'm glad to see them happy.
They grow up so fast.
They grow up too fast, Mel, Mel, she took, she, I got one of them, there, it was a. It was kind of a turquoise called ice cream shake, I forget what brand name of it was, it was special. She seen that, she ain't part of hers, she traded, I didn't have a choice. One of them deals, she took it, she liked it, I don't care.
Oh, and your last lunch, bro.
My what?
Last lunch.
Yeah, I'm not gonna make it, I, I can't make it, I gotta go, I got whole chairs, we got three hundred chairs called. Yeah. The one, that, that, that bottom, I thought they were on the west end, that's good. Right where the old, um.
Outback or not?
Yeah, yeah, where, was it the outback, was that, I don't know where outback was before, but anyway, they closed one up and burned. Really, really just go.
Um, said something about it, she wasn't sure.
It's closed, I don't know what happened, nobody knows, it just sit there. I don't know what happened there, they had, I didn't eat in there a lot, but I've been in there several times, it's been bad, let's see.
Oh yeah, these were all the water bills that we, uh, came the day after the meeting, and they were doing the twenty second, which was yesterday. And, uh.
No, that's not, I, for them to send them out like that.
Well, one, we've, you know, meeting twice a month, I don't really do those. Does it lose?
No one, I say no on the agenda.
The billing list is not true.
Cheers. Yeah, I thought, this would go quick, there's not much on the agenda.
If Dutch wouldn't have kept going on and on about stuff, we'd be alright, I'm just kidding.
Well, actually, we, you know, done everything, so proving the state's exoneration, we can't, right?
In Germany. Where is Bunker Hill, Western, it's down next to Morgan Park. Dana, Brian, who's Dana who? Right, I think. Sorry. Is that Mark's? That's not Mark's finger. No, I don't think he's this.
It says J J, uh, no, I don't want to share, never.
Border Ranger? We bought a truck. Oh, that's the, that's for, that's that one for the dog pound, I guess it just got a dinner. Yeah. It's coming out the dog, funny. Yeah, it's just, just got it. Okay. Oh, you don't, do I hear a motion to approve the estates?
I make a motion, we approve the estates.
Second that, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, alright, sorry, do I hear a motion to, uh, approve the exoneration?
I make a motion, we approve the exonerations.
Okay, I second that, and I approve it also, and do I hear a motion, is, except the bills payable.
Council people and purchase orders.
And purchase, make a motion, we pay accounts payable and purchase orders.
I second that, pretty bad also.
Do I hear a mood that we are through? I second that.
I agree with that also.
Somebody stumbled away.